Great, now we are live and ready to begin when you are mayor.
Thank you very much. I'll call this meeting to order and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one man, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Didn't work very well. We're not in sync.
Well, we'll have to work on that. Madam City Clerk, our role, please.
Yes, Councilmember D'Amico.
Yes.
Councilmember Duran.
Here.
Councilmember Meister.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Heilman.
Here.
Mayor Horvath.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much, and we did not have a closed session this evening, so we'll move right to approval of the agenda. Madam City Clerk, do you have any changes or does staff have any changes to the agenda?
I don't have any changes, mayor.
Okay, so I'm gonna jump in first and see if I can try a couple of items. Item 4D, as presented, seems to be consistent with conversation we had previously. I'm wondering if we might be able to move that discussion item to consent. Okay, hearing no objections, we'll move that item to consent. Item 4F, is that possible to move to consent? And I'll read all of these aloud.
What, I'm sorry, I was muted. What is item 4D?
Okay, I'll read them aloud. As I go. Item 4D is the Urgency Ordinance Amending the City's Temporary Residential Eviction Moratorium. Are we comfortable moving that item to consent?
Yes.
Okay, and then the next item would be 4F. The Updates on COVID-19 Recovery Measures to Support Businesses and Regulating Third-Party Delivery Service Fees.
I have questions and comments. I'd like to keep it on.
Okay, we'll keep it on for discussion. Item 5A is Resolution Approving the Use of Community Development Block Grant Funds to Respond to COVID-19 Pandemic During Fiscal Year 2020-2021. Is it possible to move that item to consent?
I'm good with that.
Okay, and item 5C, Resolutions Regarding the Administration of the General Municipal Election to Be Held on Tuesday, November 3, 2020. Are there any objections to moving that item to consent? No. Okay, so we'll move for D, 5A, and 5C to consent. Any others?
Mayor, I have a question about item 2H. I can raise it during council member comments. And staff can do what they want with it, but I'm supportive of the item generally, but I have concerns about where we're deciding and how we're deciding to put in these devices.
I have similar questions.
If you have questions as well, then why don't we pull it from consent?
Okay.
Yeah, that would be good. I do have questions.
All right, so we'll pull item 2H. Any other changes to the agenda? And to be clear, while you're thinking, if there's anything else, item 2H is Neighborhood Test Traffic Calming and Safety Treatments.
If there are no other changes, I would move the agenda as amended.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember D'Amico.
Yes.
Councilmember Duran.
Aye.
Councilmember Meister.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Heilman.
Aye.
Mayor Horvath.
Aye.
The motion passes.
Okay. Now, we will move on to adjournment motions. Does anyone have adjournment motions tonight? Okay, I have two. I'd like for our council to adjourn tonight in memory of Rhea Milton and Dominique Remy Fells, two Black trans women who were killed last week. Rhea Milton was a resident of Ohio who was shot and killed during a robbery. She was 25 years old and worked as a home health aide and attended the University of Cincinnati. Dominique Remy Fells was found dead in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, and her death was ruled a homicide. As we know, transgender people are at heightened risk for fatal violence, especially transgender women of color. Fells and Milton are believed to be the 13th and 14th transgender or gender nonconforming murder victims in the US this year, according to the Human Rights Campaign, and it's possible other cases have gone unreported. So now we will move on. I don't believe we have any presentations tonight, Madam City Clerk.
No presentations tonight.
Okay, so we'll move on to public comment, and how many commenters do we have tonight?
For public comment, we have five.
Okay, we'll take those next. Thank you.
Okay, first, we will have Genevieve Morrow, who's speaking on item 2J. Genevieve?
The CEO of the West Hollywood Chamber of Commerce. I hope you can hear me all right. I'm out in a parking lot in Grass Valley, California, trying to get some cell phone.
We can hear you.
On behalf of, okay, thank you, mayor. On behalf of the West Hollywood Chamber Board of Directors and our business community that we represent, we thank you so much for your support over the years. The chamber is moving into our 100th year, established in 1921, and I think the cooperation and partnership with the city has never been stronger. This year will be critical for us as we work hand in hand to help our businesses, their business recovery, the recovery of our business community. And we are looking forward to collaborating on promoting, programming, and really working significant small business initiatives to support this new economy that we're moving into and discovering and exploring what those new normals will be for all of us. We want to thank you for all you do for us, and we look forward to working with you further throughout the years, and this year specifically, to help our businesses in this pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Genevieve. Next, we will have John Erickson. John?
City council members.
You have two minutes.
Hello, mayor. Thanks, Yvonne. Hello, mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council Members. Happy Pride. I wanted to call in John Erickson, Eastside resident, renter, and I wanted to talk about the very powerful, peaceful, and incredible march I saw through our streets that I participated in, that so many people participated in this past weekend. Quite a juxtaposition to see everyone coming together in the ways in which we always know that the city of West Hollywood comes together to be on the front lines of fighting for all Black lives from our trans community to everyone else who, as in our adjournment motions, we see are constantly under attack. I want to personally thank the organizers of the event, and then I also want to thank everyone that made sure that there was a beautiful transgender flag at Santa Monica and San Vicente Boulevard to welcome the crowd, the marchers, to everyone, and to show the priorities and what's important for the city of West Hollywood. And I hope that, like with our rainbow crosswalks and like with what is currently there, transgender flag, that we continue to stand up for those in our community that need us the most, and hopefully maybe make that permanent, and making sure our rainbow sidewalks are there with the trans flag and solidarity and all the work that we do. Thank you so much, and I hope you all stay safe.
Thanks, John. Now we will have Sepi.
Good evening, council members, mayor and Mayor Pro Tem. This is Sepi Shine, 11-year resident of West Hollywood and Business License Commissioner. I am speaking as a resident today. The past few weeks have been a roller coaster ride for our city and across the world. This re-energized civil rights movement and Black Lives Matter movement demands us, as a historically progressive city of love, to move beyond what we may be comfortable with in order to truly be leaders in dismantling systemic racism. In order to do that, we must first start with acknowledging our own role in the systemic barriers that have allowed white supremacy to exist and to continue. The 4pm curfew that was in place in West Hollywood for 72 hours was an unconstitutional breach of our residents and visitors' First Amendment rights to peacefully protest and only criminalize peaceful protesters. Residents were advised to carry driver's licenses, to walk around, walk our dogs outside after curfew. This was not in line with the values of West Hollywood that I have loved for so many years. In my opinion, it was a mistake. I'm glad it was lifted, and we saw what happened after, was continued peaceful protest throughout the week and community standing together, including the more than 40,000 peaceful protesters that came to West Hollywood Sunday. You are all good people, and I am certain that with broadened perspective, that decision may not have been made, and better decisions can be made for the future. To gain that perspective, I am calling on the city manager and council to form a social justice task force made up of residents, workers, and business owners who are Black and indigenous and people of color to advise the city on social equity issues and transformative reforms that need to be made to dismantle systemic racism in West Hollywood and to help make our city a leader in this movement. Thank you.
You, Sepi. Now we will have James Nguyen. James, you have two minutes to speak under public comment.
Good evening, Mayor Horvath, Mayor Pro Tem Heilman, and members of City Council. My name is James Nguyen, and I serve on the Transgender Advisory Board. In the coming weeks, I anticipate more trans and non-binary discussions facing our community on the very important issues of equity, policing, and visibility by trans-led local and national organizations, including West Hollywood's Transgender Advisory Board and the city's own transgender service provider group. I want to thank community, the Night Owl Team, as well as the WeHo sheriffs, who kept the Night Owl Team safe, but for the trans flag mural that has been painted. To me, that flag represents signifying welcoming all trans people, especially in advance of the All Black Trans Lives Matter March. Since 2015, I have myself worn the transgender flag pin. It continues to be a great conversation starter. In light of Mayor Horvath continuing to call for difficult conversations to occur, the mural represents to me WeHo wearing the pin prominently and inviting greater trans and non-binary community into conversation for partnership and having these difficult conversations to create action for equity, better policing, and better visibility. Thank you.
Thank you, James. We have one additional speaker. I'm not sure of their name. Hello, would you like to speak under general public comment or for a particular agenda item? Hello? Okay, mayor, that was.
Okay, so now we'll turn to council member comments. Who would like to go first? Councilmember D'Amico.
Just need to figure out how to unmute myself.
You're unmuted.
All right, well, then I won't swear. So I guess the first thing I want to say is sort of a slightly personal clumsy thing, but I still am not fully clear how to work my way through these agendas because of their size and our technology. And I guess what I'm asking Paul is that I think as part of our budget, we have an item to improve our ability to do that. And so I know we focused a lot on getting staff set up, and I think in the last three months, that's happened, and it was my sort of assumption that this might be a more temporary thing, us operating without paper. But I have a small little laptop, and it can't accommodate the mayor's face and the agenda at the same time. And so I need to ask for your help and IT's help, and I know that's on its way, but I just wanted to say that I've been struggling, and hopefully this will get a little better. The next thing I wanted to say is that these are two requests, and I don't know if these should be staff reports, and then we can have a big fuller discussion, but I wanted to put on your, the city manager's agenda that perhaps, given the reset we've had with LA Pride and CSW, we could put out an RFP to figure out what kind of event we would like to have next summer. I think that would give all of us a chance to figure out and reflect on what happened yesterday and what we might want to have happen a year from now. I don't know if a decision such as that requires a council agenda item. You'll let me know when it's council member comments. And I guess the second thing is that with the impending implosion of 24-Hour Fitness and other expensive gyms opening or not reopening, I wanted to know if we could, in our new public facility, perhaps, open a gym that would be more reasonably priced for residents and other visitors. Because once this community, this important community asset goes away, I think we'll want to, we'll want to make sure that people are still welcome in our city if they don't have $300 a month for a gym membership. And I think beyond that, we'll have lots of discussions about the budget and other items. So those are my comments. Thank you, mayor.
Mayor?
Yes.
The person that was having difficulties, that's our last speaker, is available now. Can we have them?
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much. Richard?
Hi, it's Richard Ayub, Project Angel Food Executive Director. I'm sorry about the confusion earlier. I just wanted to call in and thank you all for stepping up in the most amazing way. You know, Project Angel Food has been around for 30 years, and we serve people all throughout LA County, and we've been doing it uninterrupted. And the only government that has given us substantial money is the city of West Hollywood. And I want to personally thank you all for your support and your care for our community. And I particularly want to thank our newest delivery driver, Mayor Horvath. She's been delivering for our clients, and she's met with smiles and a lot of love and gratitude. And I went on some deliveries with her, and it was extremely meaningful. We are under item 5A, additional funding of $138,000 to help take care of our food insecure seniors in West Hollywood. As you know, Project Angel Food feeds people who are sick, hungry, and alone, and this is an expansion of our services, and I know people are really, really appreciating that. One of the particular clients that we're delivering to is 83 years old. Her name is Kristi Ann. She volunteers at the West Hollywood Library, at the Saban Clinic, and at Project Angel Food. Of course, she can't volunteer right now because she's sheltering at home, but it is our honor to be able to provide her with meals funded by the city of West Hollywood and kind of pay back a little bit of her kindness after nine years of volunteering. So I just wanted to send you all bundles and bundles of gratitude.
Thank you so much. That is our final speaker, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Duran?
Thank you, mayor. I just have a few comments to make. I want to start with COVID-19 for just a second. Appears that we are moving along in the slow reopening of the city of West Hollywood, and I want to commend the city manager, Paul Arvalo, and his entire staff. I've been speaking with various business owners around the city, and nothing but glowing reports about the responsiveness of staff in the city manager's office in helping them get creative, figure out how to navigate very difficult times, and to begin the slow reopening of the city of West Hollywood. I think it's sometimes confusing for some of our residents if they look into a restaurant and see unmasked people. That is, of course, the only way you can eat and drink is by taking your mask off in order to eat and drink. But the few restaurants that I've been to, I went to over the weekend, everybody, upon admittance, was required to mask up, temperature taken. There was hand sanitizer everywhere. Our tables were six feet apart. And so I think our business community has been very responsive and attempting to navigate this as carefully as possible. I want to mention two other things. I did go to the All Black Lives Matter March, and I actually marched with my colleague Lauren Meister. She and I marched together, and it was a spectacular event and a spectacular day. And I can report that at least 95% to 99% of the people that we witnessed were masked up and wearing masks and being safe and trying to adhere to social distancing while out there, which isn't easy to do with 20,000 people, but it was being done. What I do want to say is, I guess I'm going to follow up on the comments that my colleague council member D'Amico made. I think that Christopher Street West, Mr. Montemeyer, were very reckless in the way in which this event unfolded. I didn't learn of any proposed plan for anything to come to the city of West Hollywood until I read it online. And we have struggled very hard for years to establish a working partnership with CSW in order to put on an event that has been highly criticized over the past decade especially. And I was a member of that subcommittee, and I know that my colleagues, Councilman Bahielman and D'Amico, are now. You don't work with a partner by just dropping an event into the middle of a city with 10 days' notice. That is not how a partnership works. I think it was irresponsible. I think it was reckless. I think at a time when we are trying to do our best to prevent the spread of COVID-19, to have a proposal like this launched without checking with the city was very disrespectful of any partnership that we claim to have with CSW. We know the park is going to be closed next June, and I think we got to see a different presentation this past weekend of what's possible. And so I think that whoever ends up on the subcommittee, rather than calling it the CSW Pride Committee, it should just be, you know, Pride Weekend in West Hollywood. And we need to figure out whether we wish to continue to partner with CSW or look at other alternatives for the year 2021 before our park is reopened in 2022. But I, for one, am still very disappointed, angry actually, about the manner in which this was handled, notwithstanding the fact that a lot of our Black residents or LGBT Black organizations were not talked to about this in the first place. That's organizing 101. And to try to pull something like that off in 10 days so recklessly. Fortunately, it was peaceful. There was no violence. There was no property damage. But last night in Boystown, at about 7 o'clock, it looked like a bomb hit. The entire western end of Santa Monica Boulevard, we cleaned it up. We had to provide the law enforcement. So our residents and our businesses got saddled with the expense of law enforcement and cleanup for something that we had already voted not to have this year. And one of the reasons being to be able to give us more resources to combat a deadly pandemic. So I just want to say that, and Councilmember D'Amico mentioned an RFP. I think maybe we want to have a council discussion at some point about what we can do or what we're limited in doing for the year 2021. And maybe we think about it just year to year for a bit. And, you know, CSW wants to come talk to us. I'm open to hearing, but still very disappointed in the manner in which that was all handled. I want to also talk a bit about the trans pink and blue at the intersection of Santa Monica Boulevard and San Vicente. We didn't do that. Somebody in the middle of the night came out and decided to paint the center of our intersection without the city's involvement. I get it. It's a form of protest. It's a form of expression. But when we looked at the rainbow crosswalks many years ago with our transportation department, we were told specifically, we could not put anything in the center of the intersection other than directional signage about lane turns and safety measures. Somebody just came in and decided they were going to do that, again, without any process or inclusion of any of the residents of the city of West Hollywood or our city government. So I don't think it's right. I think the sentiment was nice. And we have, of course, paid tribute to the transgender community at Crescent Heights and Santa Monica Boulevard by flying the flag there every day of the year and our transgender memorial. But I don't think we need to tolerate any group coming in and deciding what sort of painting or mural they wish to put on our public property, and we cannot do that. And if we allow this to happen, any group on any issue can decide to take any intersection and decide to create art in our public streets without the participation of our residents and our city government. And so I think we should double-check that to see if I'm correct. You cannot have anything in that intersection painted there. And if that is, in fact, the case, then it has to be removed. And if we want to do something permanent in addition to what we've done for the transgender community, then we go through our public process, our Arts and Cultural Affairs Commission, our city government, our city staff, and our city council before we do anything like that. Finally, on a happier note, I'll end on a happier note. Today is the historic day for the LGBT community with the decision at the United States Supreme Court. This is something we have been working on for 50 years, since the 1970s, to get us the right to be employable and to work without bias or discrimination in the workplace ever since the Pacific Bell case here at the California Supreme Court in the 1970s. It has been a long battle through Prop 6, the Briggs Initiative, with school teachers keeping their jobs. It has been a long battle trying to add sexual orientation to the Fair Employment and Housing Act, AB 101, and the protests that ensued when that bill was vetoed, getting Governor Davis to make the correction. And I really honestly thought I would never in my lifetime get to see this day when it became illegal, unlawful, to discriminate against LGBT people in all 50 states. This is an extraordinary day. This decision will have broad-reaching impacts. It is not just limited to employment. It sets a new tone for LGBT people. I think it'll be reflected in federal entitlements, state and local government benefits, and corporate policy across the nation. So to the three plaintiffs who did that, two of them are now deceased sadly. We owe our hats off to the three of those individuals that brought these cases before the Supreme Court. And Justice Gorsuch, a Trump appointee, was a law clerk under Justice Anthony Kennedy, and it appears that some of Justice Anthony Kennedy may have rubbed off on Justice Gorsuch. And I hope that he continues in that vein on not just LGBT issues, but also other rights to privacy, including abortion rights in the future. I'm done. Thank you, mayor.
Councilmember Meister.
Thank you. I'll just add to that and say maybe the transgender ban will be next. So let's, let's hope for that. First, I want to congratulate LAUSD's Class of 2020. I believe they're celebrating virtually this evening. May you go on to bigger and better things. May you help us to make this country a fair and just place for all, and may you vote, vote, vote. In terms of attendance, I attended virtually the Southern California Association of Governments CEHD Committee Meeting and SCAG's demographic webinar. Also attended the West Side Urban Forum on, after the pandemic, how LA's West Side restaurants and retail will heal. I'll talk about that a little bit later when we discuss our update, COVID-19 update. I attended the West Side Cities COG meeting as their SCAG representative, and I also attended the All Black Lives Matter March in WeHo and was really impressed with everyone wearing their masks and social distancing. And it was just, it was a great feeling to be a part of that. And I think it's going to make a big difference. Regarding calendar items, I just wanted to mention that on 2G, which is the Construction and Noise Mitigation Measures, the mayor and I had asked staff to come back with maybe some more suggestions on that. It really just is an, the update is really just a discussion of what we've already done. So I would like to ask staff to go back and look at additional mitigations such as dust mitigation barriers. Let's look at music. We just have to, you know, remember that people are home, that don't want to be home, and construction and other outdoor goings-on like tree trimming, et cetera. You know, it's, it's, it is. It, you know, it's, it's, it is intrusive and um, we just need to all learn how to coexist during this time. So um, that's, those are my comments. Thank you.
Mayor Pretam Heilman.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to uh, remind all of our residents that there is still time to fill out the census. We really encourage everyone to go online and do it. If you're having trouble filling out the census or if you're having trouble accessing uh, where the census is, you can call City Hall or email us at City Hall and we can connect you. Very important that everyone fill that out so that all of our residents are counted. It is a big determinant of how uh, funds get allocated. So want to encourage everyone to do that. I also attended the West Side uh, Cities Council of Government. Uh, last week, we had a discussion about the West Side Mobility Plan. We also agreed that we would be sharing resources with one another how we're responding to the incredible calls that we've had to eliminate racism and promote uh, a better and more just society. Um, uh, Councilmember D'Amico raised the issue about um, being able to see the agenda as well as see all the people in Zoom. Uh, as somebody who has to use Zoom all the time for teaching with big classes. What we've done is uh, obtained an additional monitor. So that enables us to look at things on the screen while as well uh, looking at everyone who's participating in the meeting. So that may be something that we need to look at. Um, I, I've gotten a number of emails and calls from residents concerned about people who are not wearing masks. I know we want to um, not have a heavy hand here, but we want to make sure that we're continuously reinforcing the message that masks are required in public places. Um, as especially when you're going inside a business. And this is something that um, the health um, authorities have told us makes sense at this point. Um, I just saw a recent study that showed that for people who were not wearing a mask, there's a seventeen percent chance of transmitting the virus if they're infected. If you're wearing a mask, that reduces the risk down to about three percent. That's a significant reduction in the rate of transmission. And with people in the community not really being aware of their status, we really need to constantly reinforce the message and constantly remind all of our residents and visitors about the importance of masking up in places where they cannot socially distance. I want to, uh, as somebody who is not able to uh, be in crowds and uh, go out of my unit for the most part, other than to go shopping, I want to thank everyone who participated in the protests and the marches. Especially the one this Sunday. It was really uh, wonderful to see. I could observe some of it from my unit. Um, I really appreciate and I, I've talked to other people, especially some seniors who are used to participating in the pride marches as well as a lot of other social justice marches. And they really um, wanted to send their thanks to those who were out there, who were able to be uh, physically present with uh, the marchers. Um, and then uh, Councilmember Duran uh, already mentioned the historic decision today. And like you, John, I never thought I would see this in our lifetime and I certainly didn't think it would happen with the current Supreme Court. So it really is a victory and it, it just shows that LGBTQI rights are continuing to move forward. Even um, conservatives, even uh, Republicans get it uh, that there's no turning back. We're moving forward. There's going to be full equality, not just in employment but in every other aspect of our lives. And I look forward to the next advance that we're going to have. And I, I'm sure that come November with the change in the White House, we're going to have further advances as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Um, I just wanted to start by saying I know these past uh, few weeks and months have been incredibly difficult for people for any number of reasons, whether it's uh, been the COVID crisis or um, unrest that's happened and witnessing uh, murder uh, of uh, black people around the country. Um, so if you are struggling in this time and you're finding it difficult, please know that help is available for you. And the city does provide resources and support. Uh, so you are not alone. Uh, you can uh, go to the city's website uh, to find services that are available. And uh, we are um, happy to fund those services to make sure that everyone has the support that they need, even in the most difficult times. Um, with regard to some of our agenda items, I wanted to provide a little bit more detail about uh, the upcoming event this Friday. Uh, honoring and commemorating Juneteenth, um, which will take place from five to six thirty PM. It is a virtual event. Um, we will have a, we will have welcome remarks from Supervisor Mark Ridley Thomas. Uh, the discussion itself will be moderated by Barbara Arnwein, who is the president and founder of the Transformative Justice Coalition. Um, and she's renowned for her involvement with critical justice issues. Our panelists include Marcus Smith from KTLA, a West Hollywood resident. Marquita Thomas, the Executive Director of the LGBT Chamber uh, Los An- in Los Angeles and also a West Hollywood resident. Jasmine Kanek, a political advisor and Syd Bad comedian and activist, uh, especially uh, most recently on voting rights issues. And so uh, please uh, do plan to join us from five to six thirty PM for that discussion. Um, I also want to thank uh, Councilmember D'Amico for joining me in uh, Postal Worker Appreciation Day uh, which will take place on July first. And uh, shout out to Steve Martin who chimed in on, on that effort. Um, there will be more information to follow, but I'm glad that we are going to be uh, honoring these uh, important essential workers who have continued to allow us to send our mail and circulate packages and stay in touch with uh, with relatives um, in this difficult time. Um, I know that there was a, a long journey getting to what uh, the march that happened on Sunday. And certainly there are still more conversations to be had um, about uh, the intersection of the LGBTQ community and uh, black community in and around Los Angeles. But I want to thank um, and especially uh, call out Brandon Anthony, who is a West Hollywood resident. Gerald Garth, Pastor Sammy Haines, Paul Scott, Princess Murray, Stacy Alfred, Uriel Miss Chalay Young, Blossom Brown, Shayla Demure, Lucky Fuller and Jeanette Bronson, who worked hard to make what happened yesterday possible. And while they were an independent advisory board, um, they operated uh, yes, in, in record time most likely. Um, but their efforts uh, made something uh, unforgettable happen. And I think it's worth recognizing that and lifting them up for the hard work that they did invest uh, to make that happen. Uh, as was heard uh, already, many people had um, a positive and powerful experience from their participation. I know I got to walk some of it with the Councilmember D'Amico. And um, and I think uh, it was an important uh, step in a journey towards justice. And hopefully one more step uh, in all of the conversations uh, that have been happening in light of the recent actions that have been taking place. And um, I think that uh, the activists who came out and uh, made sure that especially transgender lives were uh, marked in West Hollywood um, were falling in line with uh, ACT UP activists and many others who uh, participated and civil disobedience to have their voices and visibility be recognized. And so I'm glad we were able to welcome uh, protesters in that way. And um, will uh, I'm sure continue the conversation uh, about what has happened and will continue to happen and how we can uh, see equality in our communities uh, continue to grow. So I will now turn it over to our city manager for his comment.
Lindsay, I'm sorry, I forgot one announcement.
Okay.
All right. So as part of this month, which is LGBTQI Pride Month, we also have a special Human Rights Speaker Series event on June twenty-fourth. Uh, that's Wednesday night. It is a virtual event from six to seven thirty PM. It is uh, focusing on the struggle for global LGBTQI rights uh, during the COVID pandemic. And we have some great speakers who will be joining us. Uh, Amy Bishop, who prepared groundbreaking report on vulnerable communities, particularly the LGBTQI community and how we're adversely impacted and sometimes blamed for the pandemic. Uh, we have Michael Rapley, who is the Chair of Equals Barbados. Was uh, one of the uh, grantees who's received special COVID funding. Jeff Chin, who works with the LA Gay and Lesbian Center, who's been working with Chinese activists and other activists from Asia. Um, so I would invite everyone to join that uh, special virtual uh, event on uh, June twenty-fourth. That's Wednesday, June twenty-fourth. Thank you.
Of course. Uh, city manager?
Great. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council. Um, a couple of items to report on and then I'll respond to some of the council member comments. Um, as part of the uh, today's executive order, we are reopening our parks. Um, the uh, city parks, parklets and dog parks, organized group fitness and personal training is not yet allowed. Uh, face free, face coverings are required and the playground um, equipment, exercise equipment, bathrooms and water fountains are still closed for the time being. Um, parking, we will, we be resuming parking enforcement. Um, we're going to begin uh, doing the street sweeping, residential permit um, programs and moving encroachments and also all of our commercial parking for the first two weeks from June fifteenth to the twenty-eighth. Uh, we will enforce through warnings. Um, and uh, after the twenty-ninth, it'll uh, resume as a regular uh, parking penalty. Um, also from the city clerk's office, uh, commission and advisory board meetings will resume virtually. Um, they're uh, working uh, with the different bodies in terms of, of training to make sure that they're able to um, access uh, the information to conduct uh, city business. Um, in response to technology in the budget, we do have uh, money set aside uh, for remote technology. Um, as we all know, we kind of went from one day in the building to the next day out of the building and it was a struggle as a lot of us stumbled along uh, at home with technology uh, to uh, do work and conduct uh, business. So we will be looking at um, providing uh, staff and the city council uh, resources that one um, enable uh, folks to uh, multitask and conduct business, but also uh, that we have uh, newer technology with the proper safeguards to protect the city's uh, technological infrastructure. Um, so that'll be something that we'll be reaching out to all of you on to uh, see where the gaps are in technology and to work to meet uh, your technology needs. Um, I will work with the um, event staff to schedule time during the summer to have a uh, a more uh, nuanced conversation about uh, Pride Month and a pride event uh, for twenty twenty-one in the city of West Hollywood. And then from that conversation, we'll uh, move forward with the council's uh, direction. Uh, question about gyms, the uh, new facility that we're building at the park um, can accommodate uh, some, some equipment, but it wasn't designed to be a full gym. Uh, so Steve Campbell said he will investigate um, options and uh, report back to council on, on that. And um, I know that there's a question on two G and I'm trying to remember if the question was asked or um, oh, yes, this is the one um, in terms of mitigation for constructions. Um, staff will come back with some additional um, uh, options for council to consider. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Madam City Clerk, I believe we have one more speaker before you provide us with the fiscal impact of our calendar.
Yes, we have one additional public speaker. David, are you there?
Yes, hi, it's David Cooley. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we have two minutes to speak.
Thank you. Sorry for the delay. I'm, I always have technical difficulties working on it. Um, first, happy pride. Um, I, I just wanted to take a moment because um, this is more of a call of just saying thank you to all of you. Um, you know, we're working on uh, we just celebrated our twenty-ninth year uh, being closed, but uh, we re-reopened. And I just wanted to say a quick thing to um, I don't know if the, if our residents know, but Paul, our city manager has organized conference calls basically a few times a week um, with his department heads and keeping us informed. And we have economic uh, impact committees and uh, a calm Fridays. It's almost like a therapy session for all the restaurant owners to share thoughts and hear the public updates from the health department and we'll work together. And it's really, really brought uh, a really close community together of, of business owners that we would, we see once each other when we would frequent. Um, but this has been a really, really, really helpful during this uh, during this time. Um, especially really thanks goes out to our code enforcers, um, Danny, Jason and Jessica. Um, you know, it's, it's difficult because people want to get out. Uh, they want to celebrate. Um, of course, we have to follow the health department guidelines. Um, you know, we're living with the virus and people need to understand that, but people still want to get out. So they've been doing a fantastic job in keeping all the businesses in line and, and just want to say thank you. Genevieve from, from the chamber, um, you have gone overboard over just, just keeping us everyone informed, given the business community and working with the city. Um, and she's by herself and it's her birthday this week, this past weekend. So happy birthday and enough, I can't say enough of thank you to her. Um, really, it's an outstanding job. Um, a really, really, really special thanks to our captain, Ed Ramirez. Um, he showed during the time of the concern, the empathy, keeping us safe. Um, he's texted me on keeping me informed. Um, you know, what we're going through, as you know, it's, it's a day-to-day situation. Things are being said this way, then it's changing the next day. Um, the sheriffs have come in um, to have a meal or stop by, keep us updated. The march is coming here. He has done such a well job in keeping our city safe. And like I said, going on thirty years now being safe, I've never felt more safe in our city. I was very nervous to find out that we weren't going to have twenty-five thousand marchers basically ending up in front on, on Robertson and San Vicente. And not to have one incident, I'm just saying. Um, you know, on behalf of the residents and, and myself of being, doing business in, in the city, thank you, thank you so much. He, he really did a fantastic job. And the same goes to our Battalion Chief, um, Leland Delaney. He, he was checking in with us all the time, making sure we, our, our concerns were taken care of. Um, and that's what makes West Hollywood. I, I, I can be, could not be prouder of saying I've been doing business in the city of West Hollywood for thirty years. Um, you know, even the, when, when we were able to open after the nine weeks and then close down. Um, I appreciate, you know, in touch with Paul and, and, and our mayor, our new mayor saying, let's get everyone home safe. We're putting in a cheer few. And so we had to close down after nine weeks and board up. Um, and talking about boarding up and, and thank you for, for keeping us uh, informed. And you know, now this, I think this city is safer than ever. And I think we need to show it. And you know, this, this is a, a message out to my other business owners in our city. It's like, let's take the boards down. That our, our, our city, from the city manager to city council, to our sheriffs, to our paramedics, to our fire chief. They have shown that we're safe. And, and, and we need to show that we're, we're ready and we're, we're ready to live with the virus and, and take the boards down and, and get, get West Hollywood to show that we are loving and we, we don't need to be boarded up anymore. Um, and just one last comment is um, I've spoken with the uh, supervisor with the health department today. I'd love to message with Sheila Cool's office, and she just responded uh, to call back right after this call. Um, and we should be getting the announcements about the bars this weekend. And I'm just pushing on, on one issue with them that I hope is included. And that's if we could get um, the bar stools back around the bars, because right, as you know, right now you can't order a drink from, from a bar. You have to go up, you have to sit down and order from your waiter. And for many people in our community, it's just not a bar stool. Um, it's a place where they could come out of their house and sit um, daily and speak with the bartender and speak with us. Um, and it's, there's, it's just a sense of them getting out and, and having friends and so forth. And um, unfortunately, I've heard- And unfortunately, I've heard of a couple.
Um, yeah, everybody loves David Cooley, but this is the longest two minutes in the history of two minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry if I passed time. I didn't know. But I just, I'll just end and just say thank you, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome, you're welcome.
Thank you. The timer went off twice. I apologize for that.
Oh, my God, gee, I don't know that. Sorry, you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Cooley.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yvonne, the fiscal impact of our consent agenda tonight, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The fiscal impact for tonight with the removal of item 2H and the addition of items 4D, 5A, and 5C is $23,955,541 in expenditures, $803,545 in potential revenue, and $0 in waived fees.
They're moved.
Second. Some motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember D'Amico?
Yes.
Councilmember Duran?
Aye.
Councilmember Meister?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Heilman?
Aye.
Mayor Horvath?
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we will move on to item 3A, which is our only public hearing of the night. Assessment of delinquent solid waste fees owed to Athens Services onto the property tax bill of 22 delinquent account holders. Madam City Clerk, how was this item noticed?
The notice of public hearing was posted and published as required by law.
Thank you very much. We'll now open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers on this item?
We do not have any speakers, Mayor.
Okay, do any of my colleagues need a report?
I don't need a report, but frequently when we get this, there are some people who've already paid their delinquencies by the time it comes to council. I don't know if staff has any update. I'm not hearing anything.
Yes. Yes, Mayor Protem, can you hear me? This is Dimitri.
I can hear you, Dimitri.
Oh, hi. Staff made every attempt possible to call each and every one of these 22 delinquent accounts to try to get them to pay as well as send them notices in the mail. So we've done everything we could to get them to pay what they owe. That's why we're, that's why we know that the list before you tonight is an accurate list that reflects who owes what and how much.
With that, I'll move to close the public hearing and adopt the recommendation of staff.
There a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember D'Amico?
Yes.
Councilmember Duran?
Aye.
Councilmember Meister?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Heilman?
Aye.
Mayor Horvath?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you very much. And now we'll move on to item 4A. If it's okay with my colleagues, I would like to offer that we consider 4A, 4B, and 4C together since 4A and 4C have a relationship with budget. I thought rather than having some of the conversations more than once, we could have them all together if you're comfortable with that.
Sure.
Okay. Anyone have a problem with that? Okay, great. So we'll start with item 4A, and this is the West Hollywood Homeless Initiative 2020 Update on Five-Year Plan to Address Homelessness and Review of Services During COVID-19 Pandemic. 4B is our fiscal year 2021 Operating Budget and Capital Work Plan, and 4C is the Public Safety Update.
From a sequencing perspective, could we start with the budget? And then from the budget, we can go into the various work program discussion. And obviously, the the two that are highlighted are the homeless services and public safety. But you may also, through the initial budget presentation, have some other work program items discussed as well.
Of course, thank you.
Okay. So I'll start off the budget discussion and I'll allow for the finance staff to chime in, not necessarily reading off of the report, but as the council knows, it's a real challenging time financially for almost everybody right now. Governments are impacted significantly, especially for smaller cities or cities with populations under 500,000 because there isn't any direct support from the federal stimulus packages yet trickling down to help the, you know, 20,000 cities across America. West Hollywood, our major revenues have been impacted as our hotels have closed, our restaurants and retails closed. Everything from gas tax is off to parking revenues. It's just, it's a, it's a global impact through the city. In normal times, our operating budget for the city's general fund likely would have been pushing, you know, 1.115 to 117 million dollars. Now we're down in the the $90 million range. To close the gap, management has put together proposals, and this is kind of a citywide effort because staff participated in identifying general reductions across the board. We are also deferring some major capital projects and we're looking at some salary savings and deferrals to help close the gap. In the end, as of now, we're using a planned general fund emergency reserve subsidy of just under $5 million. And that could change as we evaluate our revenue stream and the impacts of reopening the economy over the next, you know, three to six months. We'll we'll closely be monitoring our revenue activity and we'll be providing periodic updates to the council. At this time, I see Assistant City Manager David Wilson on camera, and I will hand the budget presentation over to him and his team. Thank you, David.
Yeah. I'm David Wilson, this is the manager. I'm here with Christine Safrid, who will talk about some of the budget items and work plans. And then also with this, Larry Kehan, our finance director, and Andy Ruiz, our revenue manager, along with Oscar Delgado, the other Assistant City Manager, who will be here to answer questions if you have questions after the presentation. So I will make this very brief. I think Paul really touched on pretty much everything, but as he mentioned, there is a about a 20% reduction in revenues that we're projecting for the coming budget, down to about 90 million. And that is a conservative number that's based on what we know right now, but we know that things are continuing to change quickly. So we will continue to monitor and make adjustments as necessary. But based on that amount, we did propose a number of cost-saving measures. The first was issuing bonds, which we all did at the May 18 meeting. We did sell those bonds, just under $90 million at interest rates that were even better than we were projecting in May. It was about 2.1% for the taxes and bonds and 2.7% for the taxable. And so that allows us to use those bonds for capital projects that are in progress or that were already planned and use that that savings for the budget or for emergency savings, emergency reserves later. We also reduced expenses with all the departments by 15 to 20%. And those reductions were primarily cost per contracts and other administrative costs. We reduced the special events costs. We cut all the special events by 20% or canceled them. We canceled all the in-person gatherings through the end of the calendar year based on the direction from council at the earlier May meeting. Some of those events are happening virtually, so there is some budget for some of those events. We did cancel the Halloween carnival and also the Pride event is not included in the budget based on the closure of West Hollywood Park. So we did see significant savings by not including those two major events. The other cost-saving measure that I want to talk a little about is voluntary furlough. We worked with the Barbie units of the city for a voluntary furlough. All employees will receive a 3.1% cost of living increase that includes directors, the assistants, the managers, and the city manager. And then everyone will be furloughed at 5, 10, or 15% depending on their position. Non-management staff will have a 5% furlough, which then will result in a net decrease of 1.9% in their current salary. Managers and directors will have a 10% furlough, which will result in a 6.9% decrease in their current salary after the cost of living adjustment. And the city manager and assistant city managers will have a 15% furlough, which will result in an 11.9% decrease from the current salary. And all those furloughs will be due at the end of the year. We're also eliminating any temporary employees with the exception of a reduced budget for recreation tents and some specialized non-professional positions such as senior planners. So at least a very small amount for temporary employees. We're also proposing a freeze 19 positions, which includes two director level positions, three manager level positions, and 14 non-management staff. As we continue through the year, we will continue to monitor the need for these positions and may make adjustments, but the overall personnel budget will not exceed whatever you approve tonight. And then lastly, we're reopening the retirement incentive program, which you approved at the last council meeting, which will encourage some long-term employees to retire sooner, which can provide some long-term savings. And finally, there's the planned drawdown, Paul mentioned, which is just under $5 million for the current budget year. With that, I will turn it over to Christine to talk about some of the things that are actually in the budget.
Thank you, David. I'm going to talk briefly tonight about expenditure priorities and some of our revenues. My name is Christine Safrid. I'm a Senior Management Analyst in the City Managers Department. As we move into the new fiscal year, the city will continue to focus on priority priorities identified in the prior budget cycle. Those include public safety, public health, and homelessness, neighborhood livability, and capital project management. In terms of public city safety, the city remains committed to the safety and health of the community, including its residents, visitors, and employees. The proposed public safety budget continues to prioritize sheriff deployments across the city. Sheriff's personnel are committed to addressing the new public health concerns related to social distancing measures and educating the public regarding current health orders. The budget also continues to include funding for the Sheriff's Community Impact Team Program for collaborative sheriff and policing, as well as supplemental funding for the sheriff to provide additional foot and bike patrols across the city. The city's security ambassador and security guard programs continue to be funded with modifications to deployments and schedules, primarily in response to the closure of West Hollywood Park for construction and the change in operating status and operating hours at city facilities and parks. Second, with regard to our public health and homelessness priorities, the city is maintaining full funding for the provision of social services to constituents FY21, but has not included a cost of living adjustment for social service agencies for the coming contract year. Expanded support for the community, such as rental assistance and grocery subsidies and delivery, will continue to be provided in response to the COVID-19 pandemic through the use of emergency reserves. In FY19, the city launched a specialized sheriff's mental health team comprising a mental health professional and a specially trained sheriff's deputy, and that program continues. The city will continue to implement emergency and best practices throughout the year to safeguard the public health and end in the public right of way. Next, in terms of our priority related to neighborhood livability, the city will focus on developing an update to the housing element of the general plan. The housing element provides analysis of the community's housing needs for all income levels, as well as strategies to respond to and provide for those housing needs. Additional projects in this priority area include a multifamily property survey, an update to the historic preservation ordinance, and an update to the city's 2011 climate action plan to move the community towards carbon neutrality and climate adaptation. Finally, the city is maintaining capital project management as a priority. Staff will focus on the completion of several large and long-running capital improvement projects, including accelerated construction on the West Hollywood Park and Recreation Center and construction and opening of a new public parking lot at Crescent Heights and Santa Monica Boulevard. Staff will oversee installation of two new traffic signals to improve vehicular and pedestrian safety, one on Fountain Avenue in Buon Seatia and the other in front of Fire Station 8 on Santa Monica Boulevard. Staff will also initiate and or complete building assessments and community engagements for a number of key properties throughout the city in order to prioritize and position those projects for future years as funding becomes available. The city also plans to complete the recruitment of the previously approved project development manager position and hire a candidate for a limited time to complete the entitlement process for several major projects. In terms of our revenues, hotel tax revenue, which has been one of our key revenue streams across the years, has seen a significant hit. And this budget represents a decrease of almost 40% from the TOT revenue peak in FY19. It reflects uncertainty over when hotels reopen and how the economy will recover from the current business closures and travel prohibitions. However, we are doing everything we can to work with our hotels to make sure that when they can reopen, we're doing everything possible to support them. The sales tax budget is almost $15 million. These projections are based on actual revenues received in FY20, combined with the observed impact to sales tax receipts since the onset of COVID-19. Parking meters and parking fine revenues. The city expects revenues to decline through FY21 as a result of the drop in commuter and leisure travel and shopping during the pandemic. For FY21, the city is budgeting $5.8 million for parking meter revenues and approximately $5.5 million in parking fee revenue. And then finally, in terms of the potential growth in existing revenues, the city has several programs that are anticipated to expand our revenue base. Primarily, these include initial billboard projects for the Sunset Arts and Advertising Program, as well as the Sunset Spectacular, and bringing online the city's Bus Shelter and Advertising Program. With that, I will wrap things up and pass them back over to David and Paul.
So now we'll move on to the homeless discussion, followed by the public safety discussion.
Great. And I'll tee up a little bit. The the homeless discussion is is going to be a presentation of the work that the division does, and it's going to be Cory and her team. So while it's not specifically tied in as a work program discussion on the budget, it does tie into kind of the broader conversations and if there's elements during the presentation. I'm watching the doc. Yeah, this will give the council an opportunity to help shape the work program for next year. So this this presentation is going to be about four or five minutes. We did a run-through during one of our all-staff calls a couple of weeks back. It's extremely informative, and at this point, I hand it off to Cory.
Good evening. Thank you, Paul. Good evening, council, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. I'm Cory Plank. I'm the manager of the Strategic Initiatives Division and the Acting Director for the Human Services and Rent Stabilization Department. I'm joined this evening by Diane Con Epstein and Katie Egan of the Strategic Initiatives Division. The item you have tonight provides a comprehensive look at the work of the city's homeless initiative, including an update on the progress toward the goals identified in the five-year plan to address homelessness. And tonight, we'll give you a brief overview of all that work. We are mindful that issues of racial and social justice continue to impact this work. We are painfully aware that systemic racism and discrimination have led to significant overrepresentation of Black, Latinx, and LGBT, particularly trans people experiencing homelessness, both in LA County and in West Hollywood. The city, along with our partners in this work, have made significant strides in addressing homelessness, and still, we know there's more to do. We remain committed to that work, and tonight you'll hear about how that work has been implemented. So with that, I will turn it over to Diane Con Epstein for her portion of the report.
Thank you, Cory. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. I'm Diane Con Epstein with the Strategic Initiatives Team, and I'm here to provide part of an update on the West Hollywood Homeless Initiative's five-year plan to address homelessness and provide some context. The Los Angeles region, as we know, is home to the largest population of people experiencing homelessness in the United States. The recent results from the 2020 Greater Los Angeles Homeless Count showed that 6,060 showed that 6,066,433 people were experiencing homelessness in Los Angeles County, representing a 12.7% increase from 2019. Of those 66,433 individuals, approximately 100 were experiencing homelessness in West Hollywood. Successfully addressing the region's homeless crisis requires ongoing investment toward homelessness prevention, policy change and intensive service delivery. To implement these strategies, the city started the West Hollywood Homeless Initiative in 2016 and kicked off the city's five-year strategic plan to address homelessness in 2018. There have been many developments over time, but I'd like to highlight two city partnerships that advanced the progress toward the goals of the Initiative's five-year plan. The first was introducing the West Hollywood Sheriff's Mental Health Evaluation Team, or MET, which has increased the West Hollywood Sheriff's clinical mental health capacity to address homeless community members with untreated mental health illness. MET has also brought more regional resources to West Hollywood, as well as provided mental health support to some of our most vulnerable older adults at high risk of homelessness. The second development advances the homeless initiative goals that has been expanding, has been expanding our collaborations with Cedar Sinai as both a funding partner and through their emergency department's new homeless navigators who coordinate care with the city and with our funded agencies. Having shared these brief highlights with you, I'm encouraging the community to do as you have done to read the full progress report on the initiative and the five-year strategic plan that's available in tonight's agenda packet. And now my colleague Katie will share some of the West Hollywood specific outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. My name is Katie Egan, and like Diane, I work on the city's Strategic Initiatives Team. In addition to the important work that Diane just discussed, the homeless initiative also funds a number of city contracted agency partners who provide a wide variety of services to our homeless community members. Specifically, between 2016 and 2020, agency partners have helped place 110 community members experiencing homelessness into permanent housing, assisted an additional 110 homeless youth in accessing the LA LGBT Center's interim housing program, and provided 536 Wihoe residents with rental assistance to prevent homelessness. Although I should note that this number has now almost doubled since March 2020 as a result of COVID-19. Additional details regarding agency outcomes are included in the staff report and the Strategic Plan's updated progress report. Although the effects of homelessness are visible to all of us, the work done by the city's partner agencies to support people who are experiencing homelessness and to support those who are at risk of homelessness can often go unseen by the broader community. This is partially by design. Because services are delivered confidentially to highly vulnerable individuals, homeless services staff work hard to meet folks where they're at and not call attention to themselves or their work. But on a daily basis, agency staff are meeting one-on-one with people who are experiencing homelessness to provide them with support and case management. And every week, they conduct outreach at parks, bus stops and on the street to help enroll new clients into services and shelter. Although service delivery has changed as a result of COVID-19, the work of our agency partners continues. I'm happy to provide more detail regarding agency responses to the pandemic if you have questions. We're looking forward to seeing the continued impact of our city-funded partners as we move into the third year of the five-year strategic plan. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight, and I'll pass it back over to Cory to close out our presentation.
Thank you so much, Diane and Katie. As you've heard and as you can see from the report, the city is deeply engaged in the work to address homelessness at many levels and with many partners. We're grateful for them all. Tonight, we would like to give a special shout-out to our outreach teams who continue to put themselves out on the front lines, even in a pandemic, to serve and support our homeless community members. We're also truly appreciative of council's support of these programs and for the commitment and thoughtfulness that you lend to this work. This concludes our report, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. And Paul, are we going to have the public safety component next?
Yeah, I suggest we let Ed come on and do his report for council. In that, I do know we have a few public speakers on the three consolidated items, and then we'll do queue and a with council. So I'm looking, I see Captain Ramirez. All he needs to do is unmute himself. Let me get to that staff report. Just real briefly, as he's queuing up. Obviously, we heard it from some of the speakers. And earlier, the last couple of weeks have been extremely challenging for us as we've had to not only deal with the stresses of COVID and the stresses of trying to reopen our economy, but also being a safe resource for some of the protests that were occurring in the Los Angeles area. The first night of protests, city or regionally were pretty devastating. There was, I think, a lot of well-intentioned people and some other people who were able to take advantage of the distractions and create other types of activity from tagging to looting. West Hollywood was hit one night particularly on Melrose based on intel that the captain had received. We were warned of other large-scale events, and not only the peaceful protests, but also other folks attempting to infiltrate and cause particular challenges. Those required us to do the curfews and trying to stay on top of both the curfews for West Hollywood, for our surrounding cities and the county. We also had some physical barriers that we had deployed in on our streets, and we also had to request additional public safety resources in the city of West Hollywood. This is why Wilson sat in for me because I was with Ed and his team as they were, again, deploying resources to keep the community safe. Ed is on the call now. And you know, from my perspective of being a city manager for West Hollywood for over 20 years, you could see I'm getting old. Ed has been extremely responsive. Some of the information he gets, he's able to clearly share with us.
I just lost sound.
Did I really?
We can hear you.
Okay, anyway, it's probably perfect timing because I'm talking too much anyway. So I guess, Ed, if you could just provide your overview and assessment of how things were addressed in the city of West Hollywood. And then at that point, we will be done with the staff presentation on all three items, and we're here to take questions from the council.
Okay, thank you, Paul. I'm going to take about four to five minutes to address some of the issues. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council members. Prior to my public safety update, I'd like to say that the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department will always respect the rights of all individuals to exercise their First Amendment rights, especially in the light of the tragic and senseless death of Mr. George Floyd. And as much as we understand not only the protests going on, we understand the unprecedented movement taking place across our country. That said, the men and women of West Hollywood Station have a solemn duty to protect the lives of our citizens, their homes, their businesses and their personal property. When I was named the station commander of West Hollywood Station, I promised our community that I would do just that. On Saturday, May 30th, numerous protests and riots broke out throughout Los Angeles County. We horrifyingly watched countless people breaking into businesses, looting, vandalizing, burning buildings and burning police cars. Band of looters, bands of looters, some of the anti-government persuasion and others simply opportunistic began caravanning around Los Angeles in vehicles with as many as three to six vehicles in these processions. These looters began breaking into businesses, stealing its contents, and in some instances, setting the business on fire. These vehicles either had their license plates removed or had them covered with paper. More often than not, we watched this without seeing a single law enforcement officer in sight. The city of West Hollywood was not immune to this. Bands of looters converged on West Hollywood and successfully looted 14 of our businesses that evening. Keeping in mind our promise to protect the city, I told my personnel that rioting and looting will not be tolerated in our area of responsibility. That evening, deputies responded to every looting call and every burglary alarm call in the city that night and successfully arrested numerous looters while aggressively and assertively chasing looters and would-be looters out of the city of West Hollywood. Deputies were on scene plentiful and very visible. Once the two to three hours of looting stopped, West Hollywood deputies and deputies from other stations who responded to our request began canvassing the city, looking for looters and those looking to cause harm and/or lawlessness. At one point, we had over 50 police cars, and at some point during the week, we had up to 400 deputies covering and protecting our two square miles. On that day and the subsequent days that followed, the turmoil increased as we watched the entire area around West Hollywood sustain significant damage due to rioting, looting, vandalism and fire. The Grove, the Fairfax District, the Melrose District, the Wilshire District and Rodale Drive took an enormous hit with devastating damage. That said, the city of West Hollywood did not. As we continue to employ the same tactics we used on that flashpoint Saturday, the city of West Hollywood sustained no structure fires, no police vehicles vandalized or burned, no looters or protesters injured with only one deputy sustaining minor injury. To date, these statistics remain unchanged. It has now been 16 days and the city of West Hollywood has had a protest of some sort take place in the city on every one of those days. Keeping in mind our duty to protect businesses, community members and protesters alike, we placed large industrial trash bins in nine specific locations throughout the city in order to minimize looting and the band of cards associated with it. This was also done to protect peaceful protesters from any drivers of vehicles whose missions might be to cause harm. The thought process on this was very simple. If you're going to come into West Hollywood and loot, you're going to walk half a mile with your stolen merchandise to get back to your car. This tactics, this tactic would also allow more time for the deputies to respond to the area in order to stop and arrest looters. And as much as it did cause an inconvenience for many of our residents, we had absolutely no looting in the areas where the trash bins had been set up. Days earlier, we all watched in horror as violent rioters in Minneapolis burned down a police precinct as Minneapolis police officers caravaned out of the station. In the subsequent days that followed, we received numerous intelligence reports from credible sources that an edict had been sent out to burn down a police station in retribution of the death of Mr. Floyd. Due to the numerous protests going on throughout the city, coupled with threats of violence in the streets and a credible threat to empty one of the city's popular shopping areas, the Gateway Center, I made the decision to bring in the California National Guard, who are already deployed and staged around the country. This was done for additional station protection and on another subsequent day to protect the Gateway Center from would-be looters. This action freed up between 20 to 25 deputies to patrol the streets and protect the city. In reflection, neither the station nor the Gateway Center were looted that day. However, two five-gallon cans filled with gasoline were found against a brick wall near the Santa Monica Boulevard gate. Throughout the past 16 days, throughout the past 16 days, the West Hollywood community has been incredibly grateful and complimentary towards my deputies and the sheriff's department as a whole. That said, there are a number of community members who have voiced their displeasure over the number of deputies brought in to assist or the brandishing of less lethal weapons in our beloved city. As I mentioned countless times to members of the public, special interest groups and peaceful protesters, this was not meant for you, and it was certainly not meant as an intimidation tactic for our law-abiding citizenry. This preparation was staging, this preparation and staging was for those whose goal was to create lawlessness, wreck havoc, harm innocent protesters or citizens, hurt police officers and perhaps burn down a police station. Many of us observed what happened down the street near Pan Pacific Park in downtown Los Angeles, where civil and nonviolent protesters turned ugly when nonpeaceful protesters and antagonists began hurling projectiles, looting, rioting and burning police cars. Many, many people, including women and innocent families, some pushing children in strollers, were injured by the pandemonium that ensued when law enforcement officers attempted to stop the violence utilizing less lethal tear gas, pepper balls and rubber bullets in an attempt to quell the situation. One thing was certain in the city of West Hollywood. We were not going to deviate from our goal of protecting our city and our peaceful protesters who had every right to be angry for what transpired in Minneapolis. To our community members who are dissatisfied with the optics of our heavy law enforcement presence, please accept my apologies. However, at the end of our watch, the damage sustained to the city of West Hollywood was minimal compared to the damage sustained to our neighboring communities. We were certainly in the ring of fire, and in the grand scheme of things, we came out relatively unscathed. When we look at the total numbers during the 16 days, we find that 16 total businesses were hit by looters, and in those cases, seven looting suspects were arrested. We arrested 160 individuals, many of those for curfew and vandalism violations. There were zero injuries pertaining to any use of force. There were zero injuries to the public and only one minor injury to deputy personnel. In closing, I want to say that during a late Sunday evening telephone conversation with members of our business community, one of our business folks commented that their biggest fear was waking up in the morning to see the iconic Sunset Strip burned to the ground. I assured that person that we were going to do our best not to let that occur. Our mission will always be to protect and defend the city of West Hollywood at all costs. And to this point, I feel that we have successfully done just that. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Ed. I do know that we have a number of speakers. So if it's, if the council wants to hear the public comment first, or if you want to ask questions, we're here for you.
Thank you. Do we have any pressing questions on the budget, homelessness or public safety before we hear from members of the public? Looks like that's not the case, so Madam City Clerk will go ahead and take public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. The first speaker is Kevin Burton. Kevin, you have two minutes to speak on the combined items for A, for B and for C.
Good evening, council. I'm Kevin Burton. And on item 4B of the budget, I'm speaking on behalf of the West Hollywood Bicycle Coalition. I want to say we certainly recognize the city's budget must be reduced to account for lost revenue resulting from the pandemic. However, we believe that complete elimination of essential programs intended to increase safety of vulnerable road users is a little short-sighted and unnecessary. And specifically, I'm talking about how we're being disappointed to learn that with the exception of the Willoughby Greenway planning, the proposed budget eliminates all expenditures on the bicycle and pedestrian mobility plan. And most importantly, we're disconcerted, we're disconcerted about the proposal to reverse council's direction to add bike lanes on Santa Monica Boulevard between Almont and Doheny. Recommending to defer them to a later time after completion of a adjacent large construction project. And it's important to keep in mind that during economic downturns, these can be delayed significantly. I'd like to suggest a compromise that if we have to reduce the budget to only do the lanes on the south side, paint the green lanes, only paint as needed. The north side requires narrowing the lane and deferring that, save a lot of money and allow, I think, the city to move forward. On item 4C, public safety, I think the sheriff's station, I think the West Hollywood community owes the West Hollywood station a great debt for protecting the city from vandals and looters. And I urge the city to hold a remote meeting of the Public Safety Commission next month so that the commissioners, emergency services and the public can once again be heard from at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ed Devine. Ed, you have two minutes to speak on the combined items for A, for B and for C.
Thank you. My name is Ed Devine. I'm a resident of West Hollywood and Center City, and my focus is on 4B. The past few weeks have created a lot of unrest and questions that many white people like me have never addressed before. Groups like the People's Budget LA made me very interested in the Wihoe City budget. I wanted to see how we spend our tax dollars and compare our service offerings with our policing. I downloaded the preliminary budget, read it multiple times, even did a public records request for the municipal law enforcement services contract. And while I'm pleased that Wihoe only spends about a quarter of its general fund on policing, unlike Santa And while I'm pleased that we home only spends about a quarter of its general fund on policing, unlike Santa Monica or LA. I did notice that our expenditure on the contract with the sheriff's department has increased substantially over time. Conversely, I noted that our social services have largely remained flat in their year over year budgets. I'm a person that believes that if you truly want to understand the priorities of a system, you follow two things, the data and the money. Many of us have heard even from police officers that too much responsibility has been laid upon policing. Over the years, budgets for services all over the country have decreased, leading needs of the community to be picked up by officers. And following the murder of George Floyd, we as a nation are waking up to the reality that we must look at the world in a completely new way. We must shift our public safety priorities to better serve and protect our neighbors, and that means we need to shift our funding as well. My request is simple. I'm asking the city council to vote now on the proposed budget so that we may reevaluate our spending for the coming year based on the events of the past weeks. I commend Mayor Horvath and the council for the proposal of the panel discussion on racial injustice. However. If we're not willing to show our neighbors of color that we're willing to put our money where our mouth is, why are we bothering to speak at all? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Genevieve Moro. Genevieve, you have two minutes to speak on the combined items for A, for B and for C.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Genevieve Moro. Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor and Council. Here to speak on behalf of the West Hollywood Chamber of Commerce again. Um, we want to express our gratitude and appreciation to our public safety staff, our director Kristen Cook. Paul Aravalo, our city manager and our captain and the sheriff, uh, Ed Ramirez and Lieutenant Mulder. And the entire team for keeping us safe both from bodily harm and more property property damage to our business community. It's very easy to be a Monday morning quarterback and not be in the shoes of those that are professional in their in in the profession of public safety. And I for one am grateful for their fast action in protecting our community. Uh, Sunday night as Captain Ramirez spoke, I had twenty-seven to thirty businesses anxious to speak. They didn't want to wait till Monday. And the captain and Paul stepped up to help make that happen to give us comfort. That we would be protected after watching systematically other businesses get destroyed and other communities destroyed. We are supporting free speech. We support the protests. It seemed to go very well. There were lots that came through West Hollywood. Um, and we believe that the actions taken by um, the captain and public safety and Kristen Cook and the city manager and all the team. Really helped to um, secure us for less damage in our community. We actually had people staking out businesses that were being watched. And as a laywoman who's not in public safety, I leave it in the hands of professionals and I for one trust in their good judgment. And and taking care of protecting us. Uh, and um, I for that I am completely grateful and so is our, so are our businesses. And thank you so much. I just wanted our public safety team to know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Genevieve. Our final speaker is Nick Remedio. Nick, you have two minutes to speak on combined items for A, for B and for C.
Thank you. Good evening, uh, council members, mayor, mayor Protem. I too want to echo Genevieve's comments as Chair of the West Hollywood Chamber of Commerce as well as Chair of the West Hollywood Design District. In offering profuse thanks to uh, the city team led by Paul Aravalo, Captain Ramirez for really an incredible job well done. As the. Issue started to blow up over the weekend, I had employees who were here at the hotel who were afraid. To even get into the streets to go home. Number of guests who were concerned about what was going to happen, wondering if it was going to come down this part of Melrose. And was also on that call um, on that Sunday night uh, with other leaders in the business community. Where um, there was a plan, there was confidence that came through from Captain Ramirez and Paul uh, that really shined through. And you know, it is easy to be a Monday morning quarterback. But the the record speaks for itself in that that um, safety came first. Uh, there were no major incidents. Um, and our community is stronger for it while certainly allowing all of the. Discourse and conversation and uh, civil protests that need to take place uh, to take place without destruction to either public or private property. So with that, I really just want to um, say thank you again, uh, as well as to the council for their leadership during this incredibly challenging time. Thank you all.
Thank you, Nick. Uh, Mayor, that was our last public speaker.
Okay, thank you. Um, so uh, I think if we can start with any questions and then uh, we'll get into discussion. I I think the way we'll uh, go is starting with discussion on homelessness, uh, public safety and then the budget overall. Who would, does anybody have questions they would like to ask? Mayor Protem Heilman. You're muted. We can't hear you still. Now we can hear you.
All right, hang on.
You're muted again.
How's this?
Uh, we can hear you, but you're echoing. If you have another audio source, if you could mute that.
I do. Take somebody else and I'll see if I can fix it.
Okay, Councilmember D'Amico and Councilmember Heilman or Mayor Protem, if you could mute yourself. Okay.
So um, I uh. These are a lot of big things to sort of collapse into one. And I have some simple questions uh, that don't get at the bigger set of issues, but I think it's worth starting simply. What is the goal of our homeless initiative over the next twenty-four months with respect to? Ending homelessness in West Hollywood? Or will we twenty-four months from now have a hundred and thirty homeless people and put a hundred and ten people into housing? And sort of be where we are and not have ended homelessness? In the city.
Thank you, Councilmember. Um, I, you know, the goals are outlined in the in the plan to address homelessness. That plan was created with a lot of stakeholder feedback. Um, of course, our goal is to end homelessness um, in the city. We are. Impacted by what happens regionally. Um, and as you heard from staff, the numbers in the county saw a twelve percent increase. Um, we won't see that this year in West Hollywood. We'll see a decrease. Um, and so when those numbers come out for individual cities, um, which will be later this month or in July from Lhasa, we'll see a decrease. Our hope is that we will get to a place where um, we don't have as many people falling into homelessness. Um, with the same rate and speed as they have been over the last couple of years and where our efforts to house people. As we've housed more than ever before in the last few years, um, where we can start to keep pace with the number of people in the street. Um, and I think as we've shared before, um, we know West Hollywood is a destination. Um, people come here um, for any number of reasons and particularly some of our LGBTQ youth. Our hope is that experiences of homelessness in West Hollywood be would be rare and brief and nonrecurring. And that's part of the goal that we would be looking at. Um, we want to continue to look at opportunities to provide more supportive housing. It's also another conversation about the rental assistance program, the prevention of people, more people becoming homelessness. Which is going to be even more challenging now with the financial impacts of COVID, um, is going to be tremendous. And so that rental assistance support to keep people in their housing is going to be crucial as we move forward.
So that that actually is the very next question I wanted to ask, which is that um, it seems like our. Last ninety days of putting a quarter of a million dollars, I might have the numbers wrong, uh, every thirty days into that fund. Have kept pace with the idea of keeping people in their homes. But what is the, what are the bigger numbers? What is the number of people we're afraid will fall into homelessness and what is the cost of? Not allowing that to happen in the next twelve months?
I think, you know, as we look at kind of forecasting out what we're seeing now, um, some people are starting to go back to work. Um, but they may not have been able to pay a couple of months rent. If we were able to help cover that, they might be able to catch up a little more quickly than others whose jobs may not be waiting for them. We have um, had five hundred and sixty-seven requests for rental assistance. For a total of four hundred, four hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars. Um, and that's been since since March. And so if we kind of extrapolate that out. We are seeing significant resources going into the rental assistance programs. We are also looking at other resources besides city funds to help cover some of those costs. We're looking to the county. Um, and having conversations with Superintendent Kewell's office. We're looking at the West Side Cog and some funding that's available to them. And dividing that up among some of our um, West Side Cog jurisdiction cities. And so that we have some additional resources um, to cover those rental rental assistance expenses. Um, we also know that as this has gone on and people get behind, um, our rental assistance program doesn't cover rent in arrears. Um, but people might be paying their arrears themselves and we're paying the the current rent. So our expectation is that we would need to keep a certain, you know, a higher than usual level of rental assistance going at least for the next twelve months.
And what is that number and how many people do you expect it would serve?
Well, we've served over five hundred in the last three months. Um, some about a hundred of those folks have received a second um, allocation of rental assistance. We can look at kind of extrapolating out, um, but we would be looking at upwards of a million dollars.
Wouldn't it be closer to two million dollars over a year if it's four hundred and forty thousand over three months?
That's correct.
Okay, and um, I guess uh, so thank you for that. And then I I just wanted to ask a question of Ed. Um, and Kristen, who I don't, I was looking, I don't see if she's on this call or not, but it doesn't matter. So our public safety. Profile, I think you you carefully and um. Quite logically described the the smart and deliberate steps you took and um. I have, I have no concerns about the choices you made when you made them about bringing. The National Guard into the city for the reasons you did and so on and so on. I I guess what I'm asking is. Is not rhetorical, so I want to, I want you to hear it as a question, but how can you? Better present the face of the success of your position and our city's position in these complicated times? Because. I I know that I have some insider information because I'm closer to the center of how decisions are made. Than say a resident or a protester or protesting resident. But I I, my experience has been that when someone has raised a concern to you and then I. Or to me and I forwarded to you or to Kristen, there has been um. Some casual sort of um, delay or some casual. Resistance to sort of saying, yeah, we'll happily talk about it at our next public safety meeting. Or I really want to, I want everyone to know why we made those decisions and what the outcome of them was. Because I think for me, uh, that that's, that's the next logical step of the success of making sure our businesses didn't get looted and our. Residents didn't get hurt and that everyone got to protest as much as possible. That the places where people had concerns about how it looked or how they felt, then we now have to have a place to. And people for them to say that too. And and that's, so so that's my question is how can you better? Acknowledge that maybe just in this time or maybe for all time going forward, there needs to be additional ways to communicate. To the public and for the public to communicate with you their concerns.
Both Bill and I, Bill Mulder, Lieutenant Mulder and I have answered countless, countless emails from folks who were concerned. Both folks who were gracious and folks who were concerned about tactics and things they had seen out in the street. We are still answering those questions. Uh, as you well know, we've been uh, very busy over the last uh, few weeks and we get to those when we can. Our intention was certainly not to uh, put anybody off. But you're absolutely right. I think being at the Public Safety Commission meetings, having uh, community members attend these meetings. Uh, and having uh, clear and direct dialogue with them and answering their questions on um, why we did what we did, why we didn't do what they think we should have done. I don't expect a a a layperson or person who's not in law enforcement to understand some of the things that we do, but I'm more than happy to clearly articulate to them. The reasons why we do what we do, but I think uh, the Public Safety uh, Commission meetings are the probably the best venue for that. Does that answer your question?
It does. And I guess what I would ask of you and of Kristen is that when someone raises a question and I forward it on that. That that would be at least the answer, which would be, we will put this, this on our next agenda at the Public Safety Commission. Or you know, we 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 talk about this every uh, September meeting or we talk about, you know. Bike patrols and these like somehow just give people a place and an outlet to have these conversations because. That that hasn't, and it may be that that's already changed since a week ago Saturday. And will change going forward. So that that's my, that was my question. The second question I have is, are there discussions at the sheriff's headquarters downtown about? Policing generally about, you know, things we have heard like. Why does this, why does an officer with a gun have to give out a ticket to someone who didn't come to a full and complete stop? Or why do we have to send an officer with a gun to a house where the music is too loud? And are those kinds of conversations happening in the larger sheriff's department? And and then this is a part, the two-part question. And then how can our city um, really look to affect that kind of change? In a department as large as yours when we only have, I'm guessing, less than one percent of the total contract dollars of the sheriff's department generally?
Okay, um, to answer the first part of that question. Well, that part of our job is we we have guns as sidearms. Uh, we don't necessarily go anyplace without them. We don't leave them in the car. Uh, small incidents have been known to escalate and uh, it's just not a tactic that we practice in law enforcement. But I can tell you that uh, conversations are had at the command level. With all the divisions, meaning North Patrol Division, East Patrol Division, Central uh, and South Patrol Divisions. And we talk about instances like this or community concerns. So in it, your question in general, I have not heard before. Uh, that is something new. I could certainly bring it up in a meeting. But as far as as we sit here today, there are no rules and regulations for us to disarm ourselves. In fact, it's at this point is contrary to 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 what we do uh, as emergency responders. But it's something I'm absolutely willing to to bring up and 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 talk to leadership in the sheriff's department about.
And and if I could chime in a little bit on that too, is uh, one of the things that we've historically have done in West Hollywood is when. We do deploy or dispatch a uh, a deputy, it's because we need to um, dispatch a deputy. We we have attempted to. Fully fund other types of security that um, don't necessarily use lethal force. We have code compliance. We have. Our security ambassadors and block by block. The, a lot of the crime in the city doesn't escalate or rise to the level where we're always needing to send. A professional law enforcement person out there. So that's, that's part of our 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 network and infrastructure that we currently operate.
Do you have any other questions, Councilmember D'Amico?
Yeah, I guess I would just say the question was really about whether. There's discussions about policing generally, like maybe there can be traffic cops who are sworn deputies, but their job is to. Manage the traffic like we have parking enforcement. Whose job is to manage the parking enforcement that leave the. The other kinds of police enforcement. That is, uh, you know, escalated or heightened in terms of criminal activity. That that's my question and and. That, that's my question. And, and clearly I don't, I, I don't know that it's ever been a question in West Hollywood about, you know, why did a sheriff with a gun show up at my house and tell me my, turn my music down? But I do know that those kinds of things around the county, around the state are questions that are being asked about how policing is done generally. And I, I know this is, you know, we're one small meeting and we're one small town, but I just wonder if generally the sheriff's department is talking about how it organizes itself around policing and public safety generally.
I, I know those conversations are being had. I'm sure they're being held at the, the command level, a level much higher than, than mine. I have not been privy to those conversations, but I will certainly inquire to see if those conversations have been had.
Thank you, Captain.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mayor Protem Heilman, did you get your sound figured out?
I hope so. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Excellent.
We'll go to you next.
It, it, you know, you just log out and log back in and it, it fixed the problem. So I had a couple of comments about homelessness and I wanted to also talk a little bit about public safety as well as the budget overall. All, I guess first I would start with my overall budget comments. I just want to thank our city manager and David and Christine and the entire staff for their work in trying to figure out what kind of revenue we're going to have next year, what kind of demands on our budget are going to exist? What kind of additional social services, resources will be available or will be needed? And in just a very short period of time, you've taken this completely upside down world that we're living in and you've come up with realistic predictions, realistic continuation of services for our residents. And the, the staff as well have taken on a burden as well by agreeing to a furlough. So I want to thank you for all of that work and effort. I know that this is not the end of our upcoming budget year because this is going to have to be a work in progress as businesses reopen, as we potentially face a second wave, as other issues occur. We're going to have to continuously come back to this budget and undoubtedly have to make changes. But I think you've done a very good job of, of looking at things. On the homeless front, I want to thank Cory and the staff for their work. The three areas that I find incredibly frustrating, and I know that our staff does as well, is our limited ability to deal with chronic homeless individuals who are suffering from severe mental illness. We can have a, a hold put on them for seventy-two hours if they're immediately a danger to themselves or others. But many of these individuals are not particularly dangerous. They're simply unable to care for themselves in any realistic sense. They're unwilling to take medication that is necessary for their condition. They don't have the wherewithal, really even access some of the services that offering. So I think one of the areas that I really want to see us emphasize in the upcoming year is to work with the state legislature to develop opportunities for us to more readily have conservators placed for these individuals so that they are getting the kind of care that they need and they're not going to suffer and die on our streets because some of them are in such bad health, both physically and mentally. They're going to end up on, on our streets and dead. And I don't think any of us want to see that happen. But if we don't have the tools to actually compel treatment or to monitor their treatment, that's what's going to happen. The second point I wanted to make is I know our outreach workers do incredible work out there. But what I hear from the community is that they don't see it. They don't see the outreach workers and you want to keep things confidential. But we see the homeless individuals. And I think we need to see visibly who the outreach workers are so that we can point to the community, they're there, they're going out there. I know we've had a conversation about having them have some kind of uniform or some kind of designation so that the public also is aware that these are people who we're funding to try to address the, the concerns of individuals who are homeless. And then a related point is the nighttime situation. I think almost all of our outreach teams are in the morning. And where I see homelessness being most visible are the people who are occupying bus benches who are sleeping in doorways. And we don't have any outreach for them. And some of those people are invisible during the day. And they're not getting the kind of outreach that I think is necessary. So those are the things that I would like to see get included in our work plan for the upcoming year. How do we kind of address or shift some of the resources that's available? And then my final point on the public safety, I, I want to also echo the thanks that people had for our sheriffs for keeping our community safe. I know we had people who were critical of the curfew and I understand that certainly. I don't think any of us wanted to impose a curfew. But the couple of days of curfew really enabled the protests to shift to things that were much more peaceful, peaceful for the, the community obviously, but also safer for the people who were protesting. So I want to thank you for the efforts. I know we're, we're going to face criticism and have faced criticism. But I thought that approach was a thoughtful and measured approach that was designed to protect the safety of the community as well as to allow for and, and actually embrace people who were here expressing their views. And, and despite the curfew, there were protests that continued during the city. There were activities that occurred and continue to occur. And as I said earlier in the meeting, I want to thank everyone who came out and were raising their voices for justice in ways that those of us who are forced to be at home weren't able to do so. The comments that were made about rethinking public safety, I know that we actually don't sign our, we're adopting the budget now, but we actually negotiate the contract with the sheriff later in the year, once we know their rates and things like that. I'm hoping that we can encourage the county supervisors and the sheriff to look at some of the things that we've already done. Moving some of the public safety function more to security guards in parks and in, in places where we don't really need a sworn officer. Maybe looking at this mental health team that we use to address homelessness and moving that into public health, which is really is more of a public health rather than a law enforcement function. So I'm hoping that we can encourage the supervisors and the sheriff to have those conversations. And as we look at the contract, looking at where do we actually need a sworn officer and where don't we need sworn officers? And I just wanted to respond to a, a comment that Councilmember D'Amico made about traffic stops. And I, I understand why people don't like officers having guns. But if you look at some of the research that has been done, that's, it turns out that that's actually one of the most dangerous situations for police officers, our traffic stops. And that's often times where there can be a violent reactions from people who are stopped. Not the majority of people and certainly not usually in West Hollywood, but I just from teaching criminal justice and criminal law, that is some of the research that has been done. It's sometimes the most dangerous situation for a police officer. That was my comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Meister?
Thank you. I'll start with some public safety questions and thoughts. So this question for the captain, before deputy is assigned to the city of West Hollywood, is there anything that, you know, any kind of test or something to ensure that, that their core values are aligned with ours? I mean, obviously we're not, we're not Bell Gardens and we're, you know, we're a different kind of community. And I just want to know, you know, how, how do we, how do we, or how do you choose which deputies come to our city?
Yes, Councilman, Councilwoman, I said, that's a, that's a great question. Actually, I don't choose the deputies that come here. I do have some say-so in the sergeants and lieutenants who come here and have had some recent say-so in that. However, what I can tell you is that deputies who are assigned to West Hollywood want to work in West Hollywood. They put in to come to the city of West Hollywood. I have a conversation with each of my deputies when they're assigned here and talk about expectations. I talk about our community. I talk about expectations in our community. I talk about what to expect on Halloween, what to expect on Pride. I talk about the diversity of our, of our city. They do, they all have sensitivity training before they go out into the streets by themselves while they're on training. Many of them pass one, two, some three different stations on their way to get here. I have deputies come, come as far as Corona to work in the city of West Hollywood. And there are numerous stations they pass to, 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 to get to work. They want to be here. They know our community. They accept our community. And I'm constantly monitoring our deputies. I'm constantly looking at uses of force. I'm constantly looking at complaints to see if I can identify any problematic areas or any concerns that I may have. And at this point in time, I don't have any deputies like that. I can say that without going into too much detail, three people recently transferred. We were all agreeable and amenable that West Hollywood was not the place for them. And they were moved to other stations where they're going to do just fine. I just didn't feel like they had the proper tools to deal with our diverse population. But with something I'm, I'm constantly, constantly looking at.
And was there any lethal force used during these last couple of weeks in West Hollywood dealing with protesters, et cetera?
There was absolutely no lethal force used at all.
Okay, thank you. And this, the next question is for Kristen or for Paul. Are we cutting the budget for block by block in our new budget?
And I apologize, Kristen's on the other line with me. The, the, the only adjustments that we're making to the budget are to reflect that West Hollywood Park is closed. So there are some reductions, but it's not a, a reduction in service.
But the block by block people, because, because that's what we've been talking about is, you know, community policing and having people who don't have guns help to de-escalate, de-escalate a situation. So, you know, I would be concerned if we were decreasing our block by block budget.
And again, it's, it's just to reflect that the West Hollywood Park is closed.
Okay. And as we look into the future, as we talk about some reforms for the, for the sheriff's department, our sheriff's department, or at least in the city of West Hollywood, I would ask that, that either the city or, I know Paul, you're involved with the Contract Cities and, and the mayor as well, that we look into the Center for Policing Equity. Their policingequity.org, their research and action think tank that works with police departments to fight racial bias in law enforcement using data science. So it seems to me that might be something that Contract Cities can take on. Although I would still want someone looking at whatever, whatever comes out of either them or some other group. West Hollywood, as I said before, we are, you know, we are different from other cities in the Contract City realm. And I think we need to look at it in context of the city of West Hollywood. Regarding the homeless initiative, I had asked some questions of Cory before, earlier today, and, and thank you Cory for getting those answers on, on Project Room Key because it seems like the state is, is pushing Project Room Key like, like it's, it's everywhere and we have a million rooms and, and, you know, this is how we're dealing with all of our homeless people who either have it or don't have COVID. And in LA County, there are only thirty-four sites or three thousand and, you know, three hundred rooms, you know, for, for all of LA County. And it seems to me that's just, that's just not adequate. When we can only place eight out of twenty-two referrals of West Hollywood homeless for this Project Room Key, it just doesn't, it just doesn't seem that it's sufficient for all of LA County and to accommodate us as well as other cities. I, building on one of Councilmember D'Amico's questions, I know Cory, you talked about how many people we have been giving rental assistance to. But do we know how many people in WeHo have fallen into homelessness in the past year who actually, you know, had a home in West Hollywood? Let's say outside of COVID, before COVID nineteen, so that we have an idea what, what the, what the baseline is of this.
Thank you, Councilmember. We don't have a specific tracking that way because we wouldn't, if, if people didn't kind of reach out to us or our agencies, we wouldn't necessarily know that. So sometimes, and we do know that some people have given up their apartments. They were offered rental assistance, but they were so far in arrears that they, it wasn't something that could have helped. So people have voluntarily given up apartments and, and either moved with friends or moved back to, you know, maybe with family members in other, in other areas. So we don't have a specific tracking of that. We do hear from people on occasion and we're able to get them connected to services pretty quickly. And typically people would like to find housing again in West Hollywood. That's challenging as well, but we don't have a, a baseline to, to look at in terms of kind of financial impacts, creating homelessness for people who were previously housed here.
Yeah, because it would be great to know because, to come up with a budget of, you know, for rental assistance and to be able to compare with, you know, the homeless people that we have out, out now who, like, like Council, Mayor Protem Heilman said, have mental health issues where, you know, we can spend, you know, a billion dollars, we're not getting them off the street. And so we do need to have those tools. I also agree with Council, with Mayor Protem Heilman about the looking at a shift of the funds that are, you know, that we are using in the sheriff's department, that MET and those types of resources might be just a better resource for us. And especially knowing, as we do from, from our needs assessment studies, that, that our homeless population tend to be, you know, have mental health issues as well as substance abuse issues. And I do think that we need to get the tools to be able to get people off the streets because, because public safety, you know, the sheriffs, that's, it's not going to happen that way. So I, I do think that that is a big problem. And I think that as we, you know, I don't know that, that we are able to really look at our budget realistically without, without being able to have those, those tools. I also have some comments on the, on the budget. Sorry, the dogs are getting a little wild. I, I guess I wanted to ask, we, we expect not to give a cost of living for the agencies. And I just, I just want to make sure that that doesn't impact our service. We are, you know, giving a cost of living increases to our employees. And wages are up a hundred and twenty thousand dollars from our last fiscal year, even though we are, you know, going with furloughs and things like that to try to keep costs down. But we still are having a, a higher wages for our employees and they're wonderful and please don't take it personally, but, you know, just looking at the budget and knowing that every, every penny counts. So that's one question is how does, how is this going to affect our agencies? And, and then I know, Paul, you talked about a 15 to 20% decrease across all departments. But, you know, I, all departments, although everyone does a wonderful job and every department is important, every department is not necessarily, I don't know how to put it, you know, what they do and how it impacts our residents specifically and directly. I guess I want to know is what will the impact be, the direct impact be on our residents having a 15 to 20% decrease across all departments?
So, so let me do the, the, the latter question first. So the, the, the challenge was 15 to 20% across the board. However, those that had significant impacts, such as some of the Public Safety and Social Services, those budgets were reinstated. So everyone brought before me a proposal on what it would take to meet those targets. And some of the targets were accepted and some of them were rejected. The simple answer to service delivery to the community, our goal is that the service delivery to our community, both residents, visitors and, I guess, and business community will be unaffected by this budget. This budget is streamlined. A lot of top drawer cuts, such as conferences, meetings and travel are out. Money that we're saving not doing events, looking at efficiencies from the telecommute, telecommuting. So those were kind of the, the easier cuts to make. If this continues and we have another lockdown in the fall, um, that second round's not going to be as easy. So the, the, the quick answer is, at this point, we shouldn't see any significant impacts to service delivery. But if we have to do another layer of cuts, we definitely will. In regards to social services, we did maintain their current funding levels. They, at this time, were not proposing to add the COLA. There are a number of programs through social service contracting that are just not being implemented because of the pandemic. So they will be able to reprogram those savings in October. So we will have added resources there. Another important thing to consider too is we're managing the COVID crisis and the relief program as an off-budget issue. And we are taking those monies directly from the emergency reserve so that we have a, a particular order and a record from the council that these dollars are being earmarked specifically for COVID. So when it comes to social services on top of the regular budget, we are adding significant dollars for rent, transit and food services that are going to be coming to council as separate resolutions during the course of the year.
Okay. And then, and then did we, have we thought about, because I know that the budget, probably a lot of it was written before COVID. You know, we have a lot of space now with, you know, we have the area above Coons Hardware. And, you know, if, if we have learned through this that, you know, some of our, some of our employees don't have direct contact with, you know, with the, with the public, that they can possibly be working from home. We, you know, we have a whole new way now. So, so can we look at saving money in, in, you know, by subletting some of that area at, at Coons Hardware or wherever?
Yeah, the, the short answer is yes. The longer answer is we're still looking into it. Just kind of workplace, safety environment, how we bring employees back to the organization and social distancing and, and hygiene aspects are all being studied now. We are also looking at likely a core group of employees who will continue to work remotely. But even for those that come back into City Hall, taking into consideration that a number of employees will be working remotely, we will still need more space per employee. And we're currently working on that program now. Oscar is leading that effort. We have people from facilities. We have our architect, Rick Abramson, who's looking at space planning. So this is something that we, we are definitely addressing, I think, in the future, whether it's this fiscal year or next fiscal year, in terms of space management, that we will be looking at opportunities to downsize the physical space. The, the remote working environment has been, I think, really successful for some employees. They've thrived on it. For others, and I know there are some of them on the call right now who have kids and family and pets at home. It's, it's not as easy to work from home. So they're really looking forward to coming back into a, a permanent work environment. So again, the short answer is yes, we're looking at all of those things. And I do believe that in the end, there will be some potential cost savings. We're just not done with the analysis.
Okay. And I, I just have a couple of more comments. One is, you know, recently, there's been some information from, you know, that Metro is, has obviously, you know, been hurt by all this as well. And so the subway may not be as, as something that's going to be happening right away. So my question is, you have $490,000 in fiscal year '21. It's CIP 4104. And I just wondered what that $490,000 is for? And can that be, can that be, you know, something that we can use towards other, you know, transportation-related things or something else that our residents might need more near term? If we find out that, that, that there is going to be a delay in, in Metro?
Yeah. And Oscar's on the phone, so I'll let him chime in on this. And I also want to reiterate that while we have reduced the capital maintenance budget for next year, we do have a number, several million dollars worth of carryover projects that will roll into next year. So we, we still will have capital projects occurring. They're just from previous year budgets. Oscar, are you able to answer the question about the metro funding? Or is, my phone's buzzing, so maybe somebody's texting me with the, with the answer. Give me a second, please. The, as of, as of now, the Metro EIR is still being moved in August. So this is the ancillary work that we need to do to, to work along with Metro. So Metro is still pushing forward with that part of the program.
Okay. And then just two very minor comments. You know, since, since AB 5 passed, gig workers need a business license certificate to comply. So we may want to look at some kind of program to get them signed up. Maybe first year free and then after that, they, they have to pay for their business license. You know, there are a lot of gig workers out there.
I think it's a great idea. And I think later on in the agenda, we have an update from the Economic Development Team. So we can ask them about that.
Great. And then in terms of, we were also given events and things that council, you know, should be going to, whatever. And I would just suggest that we, we don't have any big travel, big international travel, whatever. We try to save where we can. So thank you. Thank you for your patience.
Councilmember Duran, sorry, I couldn't unmute myself.
Thank you, Mayor. My colleagues have said a lot of things I wanted to say. So I'm going to try to keep it short, but you gave three big items. So let's see if I can be succinct. On the issue of the homelessness, thank you, Corey and Diane and Katie for your report. I, you know, I, I guess I'm a little more pragmatic on this issue than, than, than others. And, and will we eliminate homelessness in West Hollywood? No, that's not going to happen. There, there are 66,000 homeless people in Los Angeles County. That's twice the population of the city of West Hollywood that are roaming the streets tonight. And, and we may be able to house 80 to 100. And guess what? There is now an increase of 7,000 more who have fallen through the cracks since last year. And so we are one tiny city in a county of 88 cities. We have 4,750 square miles for the homeless to roam about. And the word on the street is that West Hollywood's the place to be. The people are kind. The people give money. The homeless don't feel threatened. It, it's a great place. If you're going to be homeless, to come hang out. And so I'm, I'm a little more pragmatic about this. I, I don't think we are going to eliminate homelessness in the city of West Hollywood or LA County anytime in the next coming years. I think we will just do what we can with the resources that we have. And the reality is 66,000 people need homes. Who's going to build those 66,000 housing units? That, that's really what it's going to come down to eventually. So in the meantime, I think we, we may do with, with what we have. My colleague, Councilmember Heilman's comments about conservatorship, that, that is spot on. I, I mean, we, it's reached the point, and I think all of us can identify 10 or 12 individuals that we see every week that we know, that we see them over and over again and, and clearly suffering from severe mental health issues. What happens if they, they assault somebody, they make a threat? Again, a little too aggressive in panhandling, sheriffs come out, put, place them under arrest, take them to the sheriff's station. They go downtown to Men's Central Jail. They're out in three days. And they're basically released downtown to get back on a bus and come right back. So, so, you know, it's a problem that's larger than any one city can handle. And I know that's why we're doing a, a regional approach. I, I think that besides continuing to build housing, besides continuing to look at ways of inclusionary housing, you know, thinking about those same homeless people when we have a controversial development on the agenda and we're asked to build more housing, we should be thinking about this discussion that we're having right now. Because that is one of the solutions to, to the bigger problem. I, I think the, the thing that most perturbs West Hollywood residents is whether you see somebody who looks threatening or violent and is either quacked out on crystal meth and fentanyl or severely mentally ill and they fear for their physical safety. And, and so if strengthening the laws around conservatorship gives us another tool to take them into custody and hopefully place them in a place where they can get help, I, I think that will be a major step in, in addressing it. So I just thank you, Corey, Diane, Katie, doing what we can with what we have. And, you know, it, it's going to be an effort for a decade, if not, if not longer. I, I want to thank the sheriff's captain, Lieutenant Mulder, and all the sheriff deputies for the response in the last three weeks. And I just want to say this, it's been three weeks. I mean, three weeks. George Floyd was murdered on May 26th. The protests started three days later. It's been two weeks from the protests. And, you know, we're not going to have all the information yet. And, and, you know, people who are sitting there, ready to criticize anything and everything that City Hall does or the sheriffs do, are, are just being really unrealistic about expectations. I, we'd rather err on the side of caution and, and make sure that our people and our property is protected than to be so liberal and, and so unprepared that we're cleaning up the ruins the next day saying, oh, if only we had done X, Y, or Z. It was four days of curfew. This is not an extraordinary amount of time, given the circumstances and the facts that we were presented with, as the captain laid out today. It was a reasonable use of a limitation of civil liberties. And, and civil liberties are not without limitation or boundary. They can be limited during exigent and emergency circumstances. And, and that is what we have to contend with. And, and so I, you know, I think, Captain, you know, you're relatively new to the station. I've sued the sheriff's department twice, you know. I sued them twice and Deputy Boland came out of the closet in 1990 for discriminating on sexual orientation. I sued them again for denying HIV-positive inmates their medications. I, I was one of the proponents of creating our own West Hollywood Police Department. I put it on the ballot with Chris Fairchild in 1991. And it was because of my belief that the sheriffs were not reforming. We have come a significant way in the past 30 years, reforming the sheriff's department. And, and I think our sheriffs are, are top-notch. And I know when there's a problem deputy, the remedy or solution is to ask him or her to go to another part of the county, as the captain identified. So I, I feel sometimes that people who are, are criticizing the sheriff's department are, are exporting their opinions and beliefs about what they're seeing on the nightly news and taking that data and trying to attach it to our, our local law enforcement without doing any investigation as to what the facts on the ground are. We are so far ahead of, of a lot of places around the country on police reform. And people, I think, before they criticize, should stop and do a little research about where we are and, and what we're doing. The officer safety issue that was brought up about traffic stops, you know, I guess this is somewhat my world because I'm a defense lawyer. And those of us involved in criminal justice, prosecutors, defense lawyers, judges, law enforcement, you know, this kind of crap that we have to see in the courts every day is really so disconcerting that most of the members of the public never have to look at what a law enforcement officer has to face on the streets or in, in a moment where a split decision has to be made. And our mistakes may, of course, sheriff deputies are human like anybody else. But, but I really think that what's troubling and plaguing the nation about law enforcement, when we look locally at what we've done here with our sheriff's station, we're way ahead of the game, way ahead of the game compared to other localities. And I think that we just need to put out there the incredible reforms and the work that our sheriff's department is doing and under Captain Ramirez and the many captains before him. A great deal of work has occurred to make this community feel safe. And I'm really glad that initiative didn't pass that I sponsored back in 1991, given where we are today. Finally, on the budget, I think people who are looking at the budget, not all, but some believe we can solve all of society's ills based upon our city budget. Our budget is dedicated to 36,000 people, not all of LA County, not all of LA City. We have to have a nexus and we spend our money for our 36,000 people. And the reality is, not everybody that lives in West Hollywood needs government assistance or help. Not everybody needs social services. We have a city that, yes, we have a poverty rate of about 17%. We have people of very low income who are struggling to get by. But the overwhelming majority of our citizens are not in need of social services. So that multimillion-dollar budget that we're passing tonight in social services and other community benefits are really going to a very limited percentage of the population. Most of the people here don't expect West Hollywood to solve any of their problems. They don't expect the city to provide them anything. And every now and then, we give them something like the nighttime shuttle. They're, they're so grateful that, oh, that's for me to use. That's, that's really fantastic. So I, I think, you know, the days ahead are going to be lots of discussion. I, I think about race and race relations, whether it's in city government or law enforcement. And, and I want to try to keep our focus on our, our residents. You know, West Hollywood, 4% black, about a little more, 6% Asian, about 12% Latino. It is still a majority white city. 80% of the city identify as white. But I don't see a lot of racism in this city. And, and sometimes I, I think really what the conversation need to have is not race, but where race and class intersect. Because not everybody who's black or brown, like me, is necessarily impoverished. And so one cannot make the assumption because somebody is a person of color that they're in need of social services. So that's a lot more difficult conversation to have around race and class. But it's not about all of LA County. It is not about the city of LA. It's about 1.9 square miles and 36,000 people and the impact that we're having here within this community. So I, I'm going to urge us to avoid the knee-jerk reactions that are going to be out there with people calling from extreme and drastic solutions to problems that they see on the nightly news, believing mistakenly that that's happening here when it's not. This city has been about reformed and progressive government for 35 years. We're way ahead of the game than many other cities across this country. And we should be putting forth the things that we've accomplished as an example of what progressive city government and relations with law enforcement looks like. So I, I just wanted to speak a little bit about that. I think the budget is great. Paul and, and, and all the staff in the Finance Department, Christine, Lorraine, thank you for putting together a budget. I know that we're going to have to be flexible because we are in uncertain times with pandemic, economic collapse, civil unrest. And this budget has got to be flexible and fluid because the world may look very different come Labor Day and may look very different again come the, the December. And may look very different again come the December holidays. And we're just going to have to adapt as we go. I know that the team, Finance Department, City Managers Department, they are on top of this. They're not going to let us fall into default or economic disarray. And we're just going to have to somewhat trust. So I, I'm ready to support all three items. I know the mayor still needs to speak, but I just wanted to thank everybody on all three of these presentations and my colleagues for our discussion tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember D'Amico, you wanted to add?
I guess I'll just speak on the budget since I was only asking questions earlier. And I guess this budget seems to me to be too much about 2019 and not enough about 2021. So I appreciate all the hard work. Very complicated, but I think there's kind of some major structural flaws that remain embedded in this budget. And I think our, our flexibility, as John said, is going to be key. But if we're starting with something that's serving last year, I just don't know that we're going to be very good at serving next year. I'm very concerned that we don't have a plan for stopping more residents from falling into homelessness. We heard Cory say there's a $1 to $2 million question about rental assistance. Which we don't need to do that much math to get to that number. And I don't see us getting there. I guess I, I, I'm confident that John and John, you know, your sort of direct attack on my suggestion that policing and automobiles and weapons and all that. Sure, maybe, maybe that's wrong, but there are so many possible reforms and ways for us to do policing, do public safety, do community care in a slightly different way. So I'd rather that you didn't pick on one thing that I suggested and have a more broad sense of how do we as a city want to continue to lead the nation in thinking about our residents? And I don't see that in our budget either. I see more policing in the way we've done it, which I think carefully, which has been done carefully and money spent wisely. But I'm also aware that our police budget continues to rise and many of the same things continue to, to happen. And so, you know, one of the definitions of crazy is doing the same thing over and over again, expecting a new result. I'm not suggesting anyone's crazy except for maybe me, because I don't want to do the same thing over again. And I don't want to vote for this budget that, that produces that. So I, I appreciate that there's the goal of sort of holding on as tight as you can and getting through this crisis. And I'm, you know, I, I have to say, Captain Ramirez, Paul Arvalo, your staffs have been extraordinary. Our city attorney, nobody has thanked Lauren for her constant sort of delivering a new ordinance for us to, you know, nitpick in this incredible time of, you know, what, three weeks, something? But that said, I, I just can't support this budget. I, I, I wish that we had just a, that we were more leaning forward and leaning into, into some of the things that are staring us right in the face. And specifically our most vulnerable residents. I, I don't know if that means we should be spending $10 million of our reserves instead of just five. And we should just say, we should put $2 million in rental assistance and we should put $2 million in food and care and and another million dollars for helping the homeless that are living on the street. I don't know if we should do that, but I do know that two years from now, if we have 100 people still living on the street. It's not any better and nobody sees the homeless services people. I'm not going to love that we spent our money on that and so on and so on. So I'm just saying that I, I think that this is a budget for 2019 and not for 2021. And 2019 was a great year, so maybe 2021 will be a great year based on this budget. But I, I don't support it the way it is. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So I'll start with the homelessness item for A. The one question I haven't heard asked and I wanted to address, a little over a month ago. We had a conversation about an alternative way to approach how we address people who are experiencing homelessness, particularly with a level of accountability where someone is ushering them through the system. And more a 24 hour approach, which kind of speaks to some of what Mayor Protem Heilman said. And so I want to be really clear that that's the approach that we're going to take to be more aggressive in our support. And our ability to get people into the care that they need.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. One of the programs we talked about with you and with law enforcement was an in-reach program. That would provide some additional support and service and connectivity to substance abuse treatment programs through our contract with Tarzana Treatment Centers. That would help address people who are identified on the streets, as I think Councilmember Duran mentioned. Who are actively using substances or having, you know, showing signs of substance abuse. And so we are looking at that program and we are already engaged with Tarzana in conversation. But we know the sheriffs have been pretty busy the last few weeks. And so we are kind of getting answers to questions and getting ready to stand that program up as well. And in terms of nighttime teams, we do have a team from the youth center who has traditionally done outreach in the evenings, weekends. So that they can bring people into their shelter. The challenge of nighttime outreach teams is that there's not nighttime availability of shelter beds. And that is a continuing challenge and we'll continue to have dialogue on that as well.
So I know that the program that we had talked about addressed some of those concerns. So are we thinking of moving into the direction where we'll have alternative solutions to getting people into, into shelter? Even if it's not at the beds, even if it's not, you know, the Essentia beds that we typically have relied on. Because I think we just, I think when it comes to how we're approaching this, we, what I was most interested in is that we were trying some, some new approaches. To help make sure that people are actually getting into, into the system. I know many people who are able to navigate City Hall very well because they know it. So then take out knowing City Hall well, and then take out a lot of the other abilities that sometimes people are struggling with when they're living on the streets. You know, I think they're, they're starting at an extreme deficit to navigate our system to begin with. And so I just really think that's the approach that we need to be going with.
And I just to clarify, are you talking about the program, the jail in reach program or different access, just so I can?
Well, I, I don't, I don't know that it was jail in reach, but I do know that we were talking about whether it was hotel motels or other available resources. I know that Project Room Key was referenced, that's something that none of our hotels have engaged with the state or county on just yet. But I know is up and running in many other cities and some of them, you know, are having really good success with that kind of experience. So I just, I'm not saying that's the solution either necessarily, but I do think that there are programs out there that are 24 hours. That when, when somebody needs help or decides they're willing to accept it, no matter what hour they're able to get in. And I think that's a critical component to being able to get, help people get into shelter and care.
Yes, and one thing we did want to share is that as we knew that the demonstrations were coming into West Hollywood. We did ask the outreach teams to go out again, as they have been during COVID. And talk to people about, you know, demonstrations were getting ready to come in, there's still pandemic and encouraging people to go into hotel programs. And we did get four people into hotels on one day, separate from Project Room Key, utilizing our agencies and some of their funding that they have specifically for hotel nights. And we were able to get four people off the street that day. In the last week, we had two more people that went into shelter with Essentia. So all of that work continues to happen and we do a lot of direct outreach. Our agencies have been very creative in the pandemic. They provided solar phone chargers so that they could still be in touch with their clients who are on the street. And provide case management and get access to them for housing options as well. But we are looking at any number of resources to get people off the street.
So before I move on to comments for on the other items, if my colleagues are prepared to move the item with the direction that, that each of us has given. And with a request for a report back in 90 days of what's been implemented and where we're at with our programs, if that would be comfortable. Okay. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Meister. Any further discussion on the homelessness item? Otherwise, I would ask for a roll call vote from our city clerk.
Councilmember D'Amico?
No.
On the homelessness item? Okay, Councilmember Duran?
Aye.
Councilmember Meister?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Heilman?
Aye.
Mayor Horvath?
Aye.
The motion passes with D'Amico voting no.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to item 4C and some of the public safety concerns. I know that there's been a lot of discussion on this item already. And given the role that we do have in California Contract Cities Association. I think as Councilmember Meister indicated, we do have a unique opportunity to engage and have our city lead on a bigger level in this conversation. And that has already started to take place both within the association as well as with the liability trust fund, claims board, and oversight committee. Where we actually see those cases and discuss the issues of liability. Because I think it's not only a concern, obviously from a human rights and civil rights issue perspective, but also from a liability perspective. As these, as these issues continue. And while we might not have seen gratefully some of what has happened and what we've witnessed. I know I was forever changed when I watched the video in horror of George Floyd's murder. And, and it's disturbing that I've seen that. I think we all feel that way. And I think if that's not a wake up call to try and do something different for all of us, I don't know what is. And I think I sort of alluded to that at our last council meeting when we talked about, yes, we are concerned about the safety and security of our city. And our businesses and our property, but we also need to be equally, if not more concerned about the safety and security of people's lives everywhere. And I think that's really what this conversation is about. And while we can lead in many of the practices that we've adopted in the city of West Hollywood. I think it's also good for us to take a look at what can be improved. And I am glad, I know that the captain has provided us with many statistics and reports on each day. And I know we've been in constant communication over these past few weeks about what has been operating. Sometimes we agreed, sometimes we didn't. I know National Guard coming into the city was something that I found to be particularly troubling. But I also know that choices were made to protect the city to the best of our ability. And, and we have come out as a city for the better for it. And now we have the opportunity to think about going forward, how we want to address public safety in a community. One thing I would like to see our city do is advocate, and perhaps this can be direction to Hernan. For the county plan, which is the alternatives to incarceration plan, which invests in community based and community oriented solutions. This is a program that many who are protesting are advocating for. And I would like to see our city on record in support of this plan. It's something that the county board has actually already approved, but they haven't yet funded and implemented because of COVID. And I think it's one way that we can help support on a bigger level and take a leadership role as a city. Another
Your question on that item, I don't, I don't know what you're talking about. So it's hard for me to support something I haven't read. Is there, if, if you're giving that as direction, can we maybe get a copy on our next agenda so we can review it? And maybe put it on consent? Sounds like it's going to be fine, but I hate to vote for something I haven't seen or read.
Sure, and I, I'm happy to address any questions as I get through my comments. The, I know that we in the past had implemented a domestic violence community response team. Which was comprised of community based organizations, law enforcement and representatives from the justice system. And that was a way for us to kind of see the issue from all different perspectives and how we actually serve people and put survivors at the center of the work. I would like to see us reinstitute that approach on a regular basis and adopt a similar approach. On LGBTQ issues and racial equity to establish community response teams. So we are engaging from all of these different perspectives. Because while many of us can say that we've had a great working relationship with the sheriff's department. I also know that not being a black person, I don't understand what the experience is of a black person. And in response to experiencing law enforcement in our community or any community. And I think that we have to recognize that none of us are black people having this conversation. And keep open minds and open hearts about, to listen to what those experiences are and to see if there are things that we can do better. And I, I think we can honestly say that we've seen a lot better happening in West Hollywood. And we are, again, the better for it, but there's still an opportunity for us to grow. I know the captain led a station wide conversation after George Floyd's murder. And I think that conversation and having a space to discuss these issues actually makes our station a better performing station. So creating those opportunities, I think is going to be important. And I, I also think that this isn't just a policy question, but this is a cultural issue. I know since the, since these protests have come up, I've been contacted by people who want to engage our business community. And how we can as a, as a city and a society, be more embracing and address the issues and experiences of people of color who come to West Hollywood. And don't always have a welcoming experience to address the issues of transgender community members who don't always have a welcoming experience. This is an opportunity for us to take a hard look at those, those difficult issues. And I hope that we receive that wholeheartedly. I think we also have received requests from community members to address issues of de-escalation and conflict resolution. I think that's what the captain led in that conversation in the station, and it sounds like they're going to continue to do that. I'm very supportive of that. And I think that, as I said before, we have seen the results of that. But I also think that one, one request that came from Pastor Charles Johnson. Who's, who's in the Miracle Mile area. And it's a community that we'll be connected with by Metro and members of his parish or of his church often come to West Hollywood. Patronize our businesses and consider themselves members of our community. That they're calling for a human rights initiative for us to talk about all of these issues. And make a public declaration about our commitment to human rights. I think that we've done that for many, for many different issues and throughout our lifetime as a city. But I think marking this moment with some sort of declaration, I think would also be important and meaningful. And if it's being called upon us to take such an action, I think it's at least something worth, worth us considering. So I'm happy to have staff bring back an item with regard to the alternatives to incarceration plan. If my, my colleagues do not feel comfortable taking action, including that as direction. But I do think some of these other issues are actionable items that we can incorporate into how we're addressing public safety. That don't change how that change how we are approaching it from a community based response. And so that's what I would be supportive of on this, on this item.
Isn't this the receive and file? What action are you, I mean, you're asking us to take action on something that's not on the agenda? So this is a receive and file for our information only?
If you don't want to support taking action, you don't have to. What I'm asking
In order to do that, we properly agendize it, inform the community, let people weigh in and have comment, and then vote on it. That's the way we do things. So taking action on something that's not agendized seems very odd to me.
Giving direction to bring that back to council is actually what I'm asking. So if you don't want to do that, again, you don't have to, but these are, I think we have to, we have to
Bring it back to council so we can read and review it, yes.
So does anyone, Councilmember Meister?
Yeah, I just would like to add that we should also bring back with that a direction to our Public Safety Commission to, to address systemic racism. And I think that would be the appropriate commission to start and maybe also And I think that would be the appropriate commission to start and maybe also our Human Services Commission.
Okay. Is there any further direction, Councilmember D'Amico?
I, I, I think it was referred to by by Paul earlier, perhaps it was during the budget, but that we, that we negotiate the sheriff's contract later in the year. And I know that one of the things that our Public Safety Commission has not done in the at least decade that I've been involved is review the sheriff's contract, which is part of, I believe, part of what they're supposed to do as a Public Safety Commission. I think it's written into their bylaws, if I'm not mistaken. So I don't, I don't, again, I don't know if that's part of this item, but it has been something we have, Kristin has not done and we have neglected doing, Public Safety Commissioners have not had the chance to go through the sheriff's contract. And so I just am bringing that up because I think that's one of the things that perhaps we could, if not, talk about this evening or move forward with making sure we did because it's part of their bylaws, bring it back and discuss it when we bring back the county document and what Lauren also said.
Okay. Of course, any further direction to staff on what we would like to see come back for consideration?
Mayor, what I'm hearing from people is that there, you mentioned an official statement from the city. I think there was this issue of alternatives to incarceration that you raised. I think we're all in agreement that there needs to be frank conversations about eliminating the systemic racism within the criminal justice system as well as within policing. And how do we make sure that the officers serving West Hollywood are receiving the right kind of training? I think there was a discussion about what kind of activities really need a sworn deputy with a gun versus could be handled with non-sworn personnel. So I think those are are a lot of actions that we've given staff to bring back to us and give us some recommendations. If you want a motion, I would move that we receive and file this report and ask staff to come back with further recommendations based on the directions we've given tonight.
I'll second that.
And that includes a discussion of the Public Safety Commission's responsibilities with respect to the sheriff's contract.
Sure.
Terrific, thank you.
Is there anything that the motion has missed? Okay, if not, then I'll turn to our city clerk for a vote.
Councilmember D'Amico?
Yes.
Councilmember Duran?
Hi.
Councilmember Meister?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Heilman?
Yes.
Mayor Horvath?
Hi.
The motion passes.
Thank you. And then moving on finally to the budget item. I know that there was in our public comment, one of the concerns that was raised was the historic growth of the public safety budget. What I saw in the last four years is actually that this year is less than last year, which was about the same as the year before and less the year before. So if you could, if someone could speak to our percentage of our public safety budget, is it something that has substantially increased my senses? Was not the case, and so I just want to.
No, no, the actual budget amount is lower this year than last year. However, as a percentage of the budget, it's higher because the general fund has shrunk for this year.
Okay, so thank you for clarifying that. I I know that of particular concern, especially as coming out of the COVID crisis, issues around mental health and domestic violence have been talked a lot about. And I just want to make sure that we've addressed those issues that we've budgeted for them. And if we needed to increase the budget, that we have provided those funds available in this budget.
It's my understanding that the the monies are there. And I'll look to Christine or David if they can provide more detail on that.
That'd be great.
Sorry, I was trying to mute myself. Yes, there is, there is money in the budget currently for that, both within the Public Safety Budget. There is a contract related to domestic violence that is not part of the sheriff's contract. So that is included in the budget.
Okay, thank you. And then we had previously discussed that the three top issues that people are calling into City Hall during this time of crisis are about housing and transportation and food and nutrition resources. So can you talk about how we've addressed those three particular areas in this budget?
Our, our goal is to keep up with the support for the community. We do it through continuation of our emergency orders. This allows for a cleaner nexus as we attempt to recoup funds from FEMA. So we would bring those back and it would be special. I haven't done finance at all, I'm sorry. Be special appropriations from the council related to a specific order. That way we would have a cleaner linkage. If we put it in the budget, they have a tendency to look at anything that's in the budget as being a pre-budgeted item and they won't even consider it for any type of federal reimbursement.
Great, I'm glad to know we've thought about that approach. Obviously, that's how we were able to get to a budget that is thinking about the the concerns, not only that we're currently experiencing, but also in anticipation of what will happen in the next six to nine to 12 months. I know that we're doing a one-year budget this time and that, as you indicated earlier, Paul, that it may change depending on what the fall looks like. But it sounds like we've made some hard choices to get us moving forward. I know that the other comment that was brought up from the public had to do with the bike lanes. I understand Robin Easton has found a way to address part of that issue in a, in the short term. I spoke with Jackie about that a little bit earlier today. And so hopefully, we will be able to move forward in a way that that's different than the timeline that would have, would have been indicated by this budget. But those are some of the concerns I didn't hear exactly raised in the budget discussion. So with that, I'm prepared to entertain a motion on the budget. Mayor Protem Heilman?
I'll move that we adopt the proposed budget with a direction to the city manager to come back within three months to look at whether we need supplemental appropriations for West Hollywood residents who have been impacted by COVID and particularly in the area of rent and housing stability.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'll turn it over to the city clerk for a vote.
Thank you, Mayor. And just for the record, we are, council will be adopting a resolution, which will approve the budget. Councilmember D'Amico?
No.
Councilmember Duran?
Hi.
Councilmember Meister?
Hi, but I do want to just make one quick comment. And that is that I think one of my frustrations is that we're never really given enough time to have a discussion that isn't rushed regarding the budget. And, you know, because if we don't approve it tonight, we don't have a budget, which for our fiscal year, which starts in July. So I would appreciate if the next time we have a budget discussion, it's, you know, we have maybe a preliminary discussion. That way staff can come back and make some adjustments if they need to be made. And then we vote on it, but I will vote for it this time.
Mayor Protem Heilman?
Hi.
Mayor Horvath?
Hi.
The motion passes.
Great, thank you. So now we'll move on to, 4D was moved to consent. Our next item is 4E, the item about the cannabis ballot measure. Discussion of a city-initiated cannabis initiative measure for the November 2020 ballot. Can we continue through conversation? Does anybody need a break or can we keep moving?
I could use a quick break.
Okay, we'll take five minutes.
Thank you.